Good evening, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the rule of law which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, clerk, please start us off with a roll call.
Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Present.
Counselor Cooper.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Tesh.
Here.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Santigot.
Here.
Counselor Vega.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
And Counselor Deasus.
Present.
Ten members present, one absent, you have a call on Madam President.
Thank you clerk, let's start off with memoriam and celebratory resolutions.
You have one resolution on the agenda this evening introduced by Counselor Robinson. Whereas Michael Lush is a longtime Chelsea resident who recently served as baseball coach at Chelsea High School, and whereas he followed in the footsteps of his father Albert, who was active in baseball and softball leagues, while his mother Juanita worked as an interpreter and social worker with CAPPIC here in Chelsea, and whereas Michael attended Chelsea Public Schools graduating from Chelsea High School in 1976, and whereas during his time at Chelsea High School, Michael was an All-American in baseball in 1975 and made all scholastic in 1976, later attending college in Florida, and whereas Michael has been employed in the Transportation Department as a chauffeur at the Chelsea Veterans Home for over 21 years and is widely regarded by his coworkers and the many veterans he interacts with on a daily basis, now therefore be resolved that the Chelsea City Council congratulates Michael Lush for his athletic accomplishments as a student athlete expresses profound appreciation for his decision to pass on his knowledge, experience, and spirit of sportsmanship to new generations of student athletes as the head coach of Chelsea High School's baseball team.
Thank you clerk, is there more?
The adoption is beyond suspension, Mike's a little under the weather so he couldn't be here tonight, but I'll make sure that he gets a copy of the resolution, thank you.
Thank you counselor. Alright, moving on now to a public hearing.
Public hearing before you is on a proposed zoning amendment, section thirty-four dash seventy-eight, special dimensional requirements to include new regulations prohibiting enclosed seafood processing, seafood packing and packaging, seafood loading and seafood distribution within three hundred feet of a residential use.
We will speak very close to the mic for you all. Alright, we will now start our public hearing, if I can have anyone who is here for public hearing, please go up to the mic and introduce yourself with your address, you have four minutes, thank you.
And just to clarify, this is for only the fish amendment zoning, not public comment for the, I know that we have a lot of folks coming for the petition, so I just want to make sure that they know that it's not yet.
Thank you counselor, yes, this is only for the fish company.
Good evening, members of council, my name is Nicholas Gregoretti, sixty-five Breakwater Drive, and I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen, I also want to be clear, I'm not an attorney, any references I make to statutes or zoning concepts are for illustrative purposes only, not legal conclusions, I'm here tonight to speak in support of the three-hundred-foot buffer amendment because it is good for all of Chelsea, for our neighborhoods, our businesses, our long-term planning vision, and because there has been some confusion, I wanted to state clearly what this amendment does and what it does not do, there's four major misconceptions that I've heard circulating around this amendment, so we'll list them out at the start and we'll go through them one by one, so seafood processing requires a special permit, so safeguards already built in, that's misconception one, this amendment will harm current businesses, it's misconception two, buffer zones are new, unusual, or not part of Chelsea zoning structure, that's misconception three, and number four is this amendment will hurt the entire zoning district and discourage industrial activity, these claims sound plausible on the surface, but each one is incorrect, I'll address them one at a time, so number one, right, seafood processing already requires a special permit, so safeguards are already built in, the special permit process is not a guaranteed safeguard, special permits are discretionary, political, and determined case by case, and in Chelsea where many residents work multiple jobs, manage childcare, care for elders, attending a series of evening hearings is simply not possible, relying on the special permit process alone places the entire burden on residents to defend their own neighborhood, often without the time, the scheduling flexibility, or the technical expertise needed to participate fully, a buffer zone by contrast is predictable, it's proactive, it's self-enforcing, and it's equitable, it protects residents automatically regardless of who can attend a meeting or challenge an application, number two, this amendment will harm current businesses, that's just inaccurate, under Massachusetts zoning principles, again, speaking illustratively, legally established, existing uses are fully protected, they cannot be forced to move, close, shrink, or change due to a zoning amendment, this means no current lawfully established business is harmed by this amendment, not one, the amendment applies only to future decisions which is exactly how zoning is intended to function, the misunderstanding that this amendment hurts current businesses comes from a basic confusion about what zoning actually does, number three, buffer zones are new, unusual, or not a part of Chelsea's zoning structure, but, buffer zones are not new in Chelsea, Chelsea already uses buffer zones extensively, auto repair and vehicle facilities have a hundred-foot buffer zone, indoor recreation facilities twenty-five feet, most notably, the Chelsea Creek Harbor Master and designated port area master plan adopted in 2022, signed by a number of folks in this room, explicitly identifies certain uses as incompatible with industrial processing, and directs the city to ensure appropriate separation between incompatible uses and sensitive areas, buffering is not new, this amendment simply applies an existing planning tool to a higher intensity industrial use, this amendment will hurt the entire zoning district and discourage industrial activity, that's number four, this amendment applies to one single high-impact use, fish or seafood processing, it does not restrict or discourage manufacturing, logistics, warehousing, distribution, trades, fabrication, or the many industrial activities that keep Chelsea's economy strong, industrial development remains fully supported in the district, this amendment simply ensures that one high-impact use is cited responsibly, consistent with Chelsea's long-term planning documents and best practices in industrial zoning, this amendment is good for all of Chelsea, and despite the misconceptions, the special permit does not guarantee protection, a buffer does, the amendment does not harm current businesses, buffer zones are not new to Chelsea, and this amendment does not harm industrial activity, this is responsible zoning, it's predictable planning, this is how we protect residents, support businesses, and build a healthier, more sustainable future for our Chelsea, for our city, I respectfully urge you to support this amendment, because to advocate for our own health, safety, and general welfare is not to be a privileged view, it is to be human, palante.
Good evening, counselors, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, my name is Marchesa and I live on Commandant's Way here in Chelsea, I'm here because I love this city, I believe we all have a responsibility to protect the place we call home, and tonight, that responsibility feels like supporting Counselor Tesh's three-hundred-foot buffer between enclosed fish processing and our neighborhoods, I want to begin with something simple, a buffer zone is not a radical idea, it's not an I business, it's not a barrier to growth, it is a promise, a promise of the families of Chelsea, families who work hard, families who play by the rules, deserve a little space between industry and the front doors of their homes, that's it, that's all that it is, you know, across the country right now, we're watching federal protections get rolled back, rules that kept our air cleaner, our water safer, our kids healthier, they're disappearing, and too often when that happens, it's communities like ours that pay the price, working-class families, immigrant families, people who don't have lobbyists or lawyers speaking on their behalf, the good news is that Chelsea is not Washington, and tonight you have the power to choose a different path, because here in our city, we know the truth, we know that Chelsea is one of the most densely populated communities in Massachusetts, we know our children already grow up next to highways, truck routes, fuel tanks, salt piles, and we know that when we talk about adding one more heavy, noisy, high-traffic industrial use right next to our homes, we're not talking about an inconvenience, we're talking about people's health, people's sleep, people's dignity, a three-hundred-foot buffer, barely a block, it's not luxury, it's the least we can do, we're not banning fish processing, we're not shutting the door on business, we're simply saying, yes, you can operate here, but do it responsibly, do it at a distance that respects the people, that respects the people who live here, this is fairness, it's balance, it's good government, and so tonight, I'm asking you to stand with us, to stand with the parents whose kids wake up at truck noise at 4:00 AM, to stand with seniors whose windows shake when loading ducks, dogs run through the night, to stand with the families who have carried more of the industrial burden than any other community in this region, Chelsea has always been a city where people look out for one another, and when you vote for this buffer, you're saying that Chelsea, working-class families are not invisible, we are not disposable, we matter, so let us draw a clear line, not against business, but for our people, let us show that progress and protection can live side by side, and let us choose a future where Chelsea grows, but never at the expense of the folks who call it home, thank you.
Anyone else here?
Hello, hello, Eddie Gaffney at a Hundred Commandant's Way, I'm here in support of Manuel Teshi's proposal for a three-hundred-foot buffer zone for seafood processing in regards to residential use, as you all, I sent you all an email today with some maps and information and facts, I'd just like to share, repeat some of the information I sent with you, the first one in particular is, the original zoning ordinance allowed for eight thousand five hundred and nineteen linear feet of existing seafood adjacency to residential zones, this new change that they did in trying to put seafood into an industrial zone, now there is two thou, two, now there is twenty-three thousand nine hundred and eighty-one linear feet of new seafood adjacencies to residential districts, that's almost three miles of length of potential issues now with residential zones touching industrial zones, and the only two districts, the only two lucky districts up there are districts one and two where you don't have any residential and any industrial zones touching each other, although now, all the other districts are affected, and buffer zones are used for exactly this purpose, when you introduce a new use into a zone, you either have to do it with dimensional requirements or a buffer, so this is something that I feel like should have been vetted when this change was introduced last year, but in my opinion, it was flawed and rushed for some reason, and here we are trying to remedy that, so, in an example, finally, I'd like to conclude with an example of a three-hundred-foot buffer, so everybody's clear with the distance, we have a great example, we had an election recently, and there's a hundred-foot buffer zone on each side of the entry of the high school, and that's the area, three hundred feet total, where you're not allowed to do any election interfering, no soliciting, no anything like that, so that's a good example of three hundred feet, it's not that big, it's not a big buffer, so I'd just like to conclude with that, and thank you very much for the time.
Anyone else willing or interested in speaking? No? Okay, seeing no more.
I have a point of inquiry, it's nothing before the council at the moment, but just for the public here, would, would the clerk be able to explain what happened to the proposed amendment and why we will not be able to vote on it in this council?
Clerk?
As of right now, the zoning amendment is pending before a subcommittee, subcommittee meeting did not happen, so it hasn't been moved out of subcommittee yet, and given the timeframe for where we are right now, council was required to have its public hearing within sixty-five days after receiving, after sending it down to the planning board, we are at that point and beyond at this point, so even if council were to have a subcommittee meeting before the end of this year, you guys would be well beyond the sixty-five day period to act under the zoning law, so it would, the vote would be moot, in my opinion, in the opinion of our legal department as well, which does not preclude the council from reintroducing it next year, should you choose.
Thank you clerk, and this is because one of our counselors requested for it to go into subcommittee.
Correct, and no subcommittee was scheduled by the council was involved.
I would just like to leave for the record that this was my fear when I said that we should not move it to a subcommittee, because we would not get to vote on it, and I was told that that would not happen, and that is exactly what happened, so just leaving that for the record, it will have to be reintroduced again next year and go through the process all over again, that's, so the public knows what happened, you know, that why today we only have a public hearing.
Thank you counselor, and thank you to everyone who came and spoke today, really appreciate your time and really appreciate you sharing your thoughts, it's very important for us to have public comment, okay, closing our public hearing, that was not required, but, we're gonna move on now to our public speaking, is anyone here for public speaking? Alright, please come to the front? Perfect, perfect, please come to the front and state your name. Si pueden por favor? Acompáñenos aquí en el micrófono y díganos su nombre, por favor. City manager, our interpreter is in the crowd, correct? Okay. Como se sienta más cómodo, en inglés, español?
Yes, mi inglés no es muy bueno, lo siento.
No se preocupe.
Alright, my name is Crystal Coronel, I am also a resident of Chelsea, and I will be translating for him.
Bueno, primer lugar, buenas noches y gracias por este tiempo, de verdad nunca me imaginé estar acá.
Good evening, yeah, absolutely, good evening and thank you for your time.
Si, no me imaginé estar acá.
He did not imagine to be here.
Pero cuando pasaba de compras con mi esposa en la parte de afuera.
So when I was going out shopping with my wife.
Es, vi a este grupo hermoso de personas con unos ice.
I saw this beautiful group of people with signs.
Luchando por algunos derechos que hemos perdido en esta ciudad.
Fighting for some rights that we have lost within the city.
El diez de noviembre me detuvieron en Burlington por parte de ICE.
So on the tenth of, of November, I was detained by ICE in Burlington.
En un chequeo regular que se hace una vez por año.
On a regular check that happens once a year.
Es, no tengo ningún récord criminal.
I don't have a criminal record.
Pero ellos siempre decidieron detenerme.
But they decided to detain me anyway.
Y, pero doy gracias a Dios por eso.
I give thanks to God for that.
Porque fue un regalo para mi vida que no cambiaría por nada.
And he wouldn't change this for the world.
No por las condiciones de lugar.
Not for the conditions of the environment that he was in.
Sino por las personas que conocía dentro.
But because of the people that I met while in there.
Si, cuando vi un sign de ellos que decía fuera ICE de las escuelas de Chelsea.
When I saw one of the signs saying ICE out of schools.
Me recordé de mi amigo que conocí en Plymouth.
I remembered my friend that I had met in Plymouth.
Su nombre es Benito Vázquez.
His name is Benito Vázquez.
Él tiene, va a cumplir seis meses detenido este trece de diciembre.
December third, he will be completing six months of being in stay.
Él es un estudiante de high school, de Chelsea.
He is a Chelsea High School student.
Tiene diecinueve años.
And he's nineteen years old.
Y es una persona maravillosa.
And he's a marvelous person.
Yo tenía miedo de participar en cosas así.
I've been scared of participating in stuff like this.
Porque soy inmigrante.
Because I am an immigrant.
Pero no puedo dejar de, no puedo permitir que mi amigo siga ya.
But I cannot permit that my friends stay in cars or.
Y por esa razón estoy acá.
And because of that, I'm here.
Él es un chico maravilloso.
He is a marvelous kid.
La ciudad está perdiendo a una persona que de verdad va a construir de esta ciudad algo mejor.
And the city is truly going to lose someone who's making the city better.
Él no tiene récord criminal.
He doesn't have a criminal record.
Es un chico con mucho talento para la música.
He's got a lot of musical talent.
Puede tocar todos los instrumentos.
He can play all of the instruments.
Adentro en prisión él utiliza un vaso para tocar la güira.
In prison, he, I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional while translating, in prison, he was using a cup to go ahead and use that as a musical instrument called the güira.
Él es uno de los cantantes de la iglesia que tenemos, que teníamos adentro en Plymouth.
He's also one of our church singers.
Y esa, y esa persona hemos olvidado allá.
And that person has been forgotten back in Plymouth.
Por favor ayúdeno a salir de allí.
Please help us get out of there.
Y no permitan que ningún estudiante más vaya de acá allí.
And please, don't let any more of our students get caught there.
Ustedes son, son líderes muy grandes, de verdad.
You are very large, like powerful leaders.
Tengo siete años de vivir en Chelsea.
I have, I'm living here for seven years.
Y ustedes siempre me han apoyado con mis permisos para mi carro.
And you've always supported me and helped me out with the permits for my car.
Y estoy seguro que tienen un corazón maravilloso.
And I'm sure that you have a wonderful heart.
Y estoy seguro que no van a permitir que, que mi amigo ni otras personas vayan a ese lugar.
And I'm sure that you will do what's in your power to make sure that my friend and no one else gets taken to that environment.
Él sueña con regresar a tener la oportunidad de comer en su restaurante de Chelsea favorito.
He dreams of coming back to Chelsea and eating in his favorite restaurant.
Yo ya tuve la oportunidad de ir a mi restaurante hondureño.
I already had the opportunity of going to my Honduran restaurant.
Pero no es justo que mi amigo siga allí.
But it's not fair for my friend to still.
Ni nadie más.
No one else.
Esta es una ciudad maravillosa.
This is a marvelous city.
Y me siento orgulloso de vivir en esta ciudad.
And I feel very proud of living in this city.
Es, mis hijos ahora están en la Brown.
My children are currently in the Brown.
Y recibieron una ayuda maravillosa de parte de todos sus maestros.
And they received a lot of help from their teachers.
Este lugar es maravilloso. And overall, our community members.
Ustedes no necesitarían preocuparse por nosotros, los inmigrantes.
You wouldn't have to worry about us, the immigrants.
Pero siempre lo hacen.
But you do.
Gracias por eso, y lo siento por hablar tanto hoy.
No se preocupe.
And I apologize for talking so much, but thank you so much.
Pero si hay alguien que sabe cómo ayudar, les pido de todo corazón que ayuden a mi amigo a salir de allí.
And if there's anyone here who knows how to help my friend, I ask you with all of my heart to please.
Yo estuve solo quince días ahí.
I've only been there for fifteen days.
Pero eso marcó a mi familia para toda la vida.
But that changed my family for its entire.
Ahora imagínense a Benito, lleva seis meses ahí.
Now imagine Benito, he's been there for six months.
Y él no es el único de Chelsea, hermanos.
Pardon, no te quiero interrumpir. Quiero asegurar que te pueda conectar con recursos, y también asegurar que sí hay otras personas en la audiencia que quieren compartir esta noche, que tengan el tiempo.
Sí, sí, lo siento.
Pero por favor, le puedes dar la información a nuestro city manager. Okay, perfecto. So vamos a conectarnos para ver cómo podemos ayudar.
Solo, solo un poquito. Lo siento, ya sabes, lo siento. Hay otras personas de Chelsea adentro.
There are other people from Chelsea there.
Y comparto sobre Benito porque él estaba en la misma celda conmigo.
Can I share about Benito specifically because he was in the same cell as me?
De corazón, muchas gracias por compartir su historia, es tan importante, y gracias por su valentía. Yo sé que no es fácil. Aquí estamos para apoyarte, y vamos a ver cómo te podemos conectar con recursos para Benito.
No, no, gracias a ustedes. Yo estoy seguro que ustedes aman esta ciudad. Y lo siento por compartir esto, pero gracias por abrir este espacio.
Gracias.
Madam President.
Counselor.
Point of order. When you're speaking in Spanish, can you please translate into English so that people can understand exactly what's being said for transparency purposes, please?
Absolutely, absolutely. I got you, I got you. So I was telling our community member here that I don't want to interrupt him as he's sharing this very touching story, but I want to make sure that we have sufficient time to hear the rest of the folks in the audience, and that our city manager please take down his information so that we can connect them with the departments that can support him in the situation that his friend is confronting.
Thank you.
Of course. So, acabo de traducir para mis compañeros que no han aprendido español todavía, pero quiero también asegurar que tengo mucha gente aquí esta tarde, quiero asegurar que escucha cada uno de sus historias porque de nuevo es sumamente importante yo poder resaltar esta historia en esta plataforma. Entonces, si pueden, por favor, tratar lo más posible de ser breve a su historia única para que entonces su compañera pueda, o compañero pueda también compartirla de ellos, okay? So I just want to make sure everyone in the audience gets an opportunity to speak. So I wanted to re- repeat in Spanish that I want to ensure that everyone is able to be as brief as possible with their unique stories so that they can allow their neighbor to also share their unique experience. Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Can you also make an announcement that we, the city has translation here? So we do have a translator from, that's paid by our city, so we, persons can feel comfortable.
Y tenemos nuestro, nuestra maravillosa traductora aquí esta noche. Alza la manito ahí atrás. Gracias. So, el que necesita traducción, por favor, déjale saber a ella, y ella le da un aparato.
Good evening, everyone.
Mi nombre es Hilda Ramírez.
My name is Hilda Ramirez.
Soy sobreviviente de, de ICE.
I'm a survivor of ICE.
Yo soy la señora que fue agredida el veintiséis de septiembre.
I was the woman who was attacked the twenty-sixth of September.
En frente de mi hijo con autismo.
In front of my son who has autism.
Y de mi hijo.
And in front of my daughter.
Yo le, yo quiero hablar sobre, yo confié ciegamente de una amiga.
I believed blindly in a friend.
Y de la organización donde yo voy a pedir ayuda cuando me votaron de mi trabajo. Fui a dejar mi identificación, la fecha de mi nacimiento, mi número de licencia. Me siento triste porque me traicionaron. Me pusieron mi vida a manos de pistolas, a manos de esas personas que ellos no respetan la vida de uno.
So, I do apologize because she did say a lot. I will try to grasp everything. She confided in an organization where she went to go receive help, and she left her license there. From that moment, she was attacked by ICE in front of her children.
Her son has autism.
Her son has autism. Puede seguir cuando te aprieto la mano, va a ser para, darle un momentico para traducir. Puede seguir. Oh, there was also a gun brandished during her arrest. There was also a gun brandished during her arrest.
Estoy así. Estoy en terapia ocupacional.
She's in occupational therapy and with a brace.
No puedo recuperar mi salud.
She can't get her health back.
Tengo un trauma.
She has a severe trauma.
Psicológicamente.
Psychologically.
Mis niños.
My children.
Están sufriendo.
Are suffering.
Por eso yo quiero compartir mi historia.
And that's why I want to share my story.
No podemos confiar en amigas. Yo confié ciegamente, ahora estoy sufriendo.
You can't trust your friends, and because of that, now I'm suffering.
Porque la policía llamó que me fueran a traer, porque una persona dio todos mis datos, y ahora ya lo tengo, los documentos en mis manos, señora.
And the police came to get her because all of her information was shared with them after she went to get help.
Yo soy una residente, sin récord criminal, no tengo ningún récord criminal.
She's a resident without a criminal record.
Yo soy un residente permanente.
And she is a permanent resident.
Pero fui golpeada, ya casi perdí la vida. Los bomberos de Chelsea me llevaban en peso cuando yo estaba dejando de respirar.
But I was attacked and almost lost my life, and the Chelsea firefighters were carrying me as all of this was happening.
Y gracias a las personas que llamaron para una ayuda del nueve. Solo dije, no dijeron que ICE era que me estaba golpeando, sino dijeron que necesitan ayuda urgencia, están golpeando a una señora.
And thank you for those who called to assist her. It wasn't said that ICE was the ones who were attacking her, and there was people who responded, so thank you.
Porque si ellos hubieran dicho, yo ya no estuviera contando con esta vida que yo tengo ahora, Dios mío.
And if not for those people, she wouldn't be here today, being able to say her story.
Yo no sé qué hubiese pasado, solo la persona que es madre y padre entiende mi situación, y nadie me escucha, sino que yo misma fui y di pasos adelante para buscar las evidencias porque yo estoy sufriendo.
And only if you were a parent would you understand the pain that I'm going through. However, I've been gathering all of the data and all of the stuff that has been going on.
Thank you so much. Muchas gracias, Hilda.
She will start speaking in English, and then she will ask me if she needs my help.
Hi, I'm from the community of Chelsea. For twenty-two years, living in Chelsea, and never.
Tu nombre, mi amor. Please give me your name.
Marilin Caceres.
Okay.
Yes. I'm here for twenty-two years in Chelsea, and never I see things happen right now in Chelsea but ICE. I'm here for my community. It's terrible, losing families, separate families, and nobody want to do nothing in the city. Everybody covered with the same blankets. Nobody want to know what happened with the immigrants in Chelsea, okay? Why? Why nobody want to, the people in charge in Chelsea, they don't want to hear nothing stories about ICE, about immigrants like me? Because I say to my people, cities like Chelsea, with a lot of immigrants, they receive a lot of money from the system. Nobody want to lose the money. The people in charge from the city, they don't want to lose the money. For me, for you, for everyone. It's right, I'm here for my community. You know why, guys? I'm wake up at five o'clock in the morning, walk in the street with my neighbor, make sure my neighbors go safe to work. And right now, in Chelsea, you don't got door to touch, to express what's going on in the city, how you feeling. And you know why now? I'm the bad person in Chelsea. Because these people in charge in Chelsea, they don't want to hear nothing about immigrants. Because they don't want to help, they don't want to lose the benefits this city have for the immigrant people. It's right, I'm here, and I want to say to everyone, nobody will wire me. I see in Chelsea Core every day how ICE jumping people over there. They jumping this poor woman, ICE jumping this poor woman. They arresting her, her two family, arrested the arresting her family, they come and jumping her. Why they come and jump her? ICE broke her arm. She not receive help from nobody, from the city. Nobody want, nobody want to hear the stories about immigrants. Nobody want to lose nothing. Nobody want to lose the benefits. It's right, I'm here to let know to everyone, nobody will stop me. And I'm continuing to do this. I'll go put one example, one example. I'm in Chelsea Core, following, following, following the cases and helping people. You guys want to hear why I'm helping people? The poor kids like, like this, like this teacher, what is his name? The guy, no, the guy arresting? Benito. Send them Benito back, and send them to heat die back home. I want to contain my story very fast. I'm bringing my son from back, from back home, few years ago, and they back over from the system, that they poor my son.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but your time is up. Thank you so much for sharing your opinion.
You see what I say? Everybody want to wire me.
I would like to now allow.
That's a start with these people.
I would like to now allow.
Everybody want to wire me, and nobody will wire me. I got all the stories to contain. Thank you.
I would like the next person who speaks to please come up to the podium. Thank you. I would also like for anyone in the audience who wants to speak to please make sure to state your name so that we can follow up. Thank you. And address.
Hi, everybody. My name is Catherine Anderson. I live at fifteen Powder House Terrace Number Three in Somerville, Massachusetts. My name, I'm the middle school, special education teacher over at the Brown Middle School, and also the president of the Chelsea Teachers Union. I'm speaking here tonight in favor of the city putting, meeting the requests and the petition. I really think that this is about two things. It's about taking back our agency, and it's about regaining trust in our institutions. We saw back in the spring a terrible incident with several children being detained by ICE after an incident at Chelsea High School. Subsequently, there was a change in policy, and we have not seen children detained since then. We know that we can take actions that help protect our families and keep them in this community, and we need to continue to take those actions moving forward. The other part about this is about regaining trust in our institutions. Our families are struggling to maintain hope and safety in Chelsea right now. Chelsea Public Schools has lost three hundred students, which is a five percent drop in our student population. That is greater than the drop that we saw during COVID. We need to make sure that we are proactively doing things to keep families reassured that they are safe. Right now, there's more that we could be doing to make sure that people understand that they are safe within the city of Chelsea, and that their children belong in our schools. Every single child who is a resident, no matter their immigration documentation background, is entitled to an education in the state of Massachusetts, and it is our responsibility as a city to make sure that every single family is receiving that. And there's much more that we could be doing to make sure that that's happening right now. And I hope that the city council takes the action to take back that agency and hope to help support our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Catherine, and give me one second. So Catherine, if I can please get, at some point, we should connect so that I can get a sense of the folks that, in your network. I know I bump into folks every time when we're driving around or on bikes and trying to respond to the movements in the community, but there's also been efforts in place for us to pick up Chelsea folks that are released at Burlington that don't have any way of communicating with anyone because they have no cell phones, so if we can connect afterwards. So le acabo de decir a Catherine, si me puede compartir para nosotros poder conectar con el, el grupo que ella tiene en el piso. Nosotros nos vemos muchas veces en la calle cuando estamos respondiendo a las visitas de ICE. Nosotros nos encontramos en la calle, pero aparte de estar buscando las personas en la calle para poder prevenir este tipo de acción en nuestra comunidad, yo me encuentro muchas veces en Burlington, recogiendo a personas de Chelsea que son detenidas y después son soltadas a las diez, once, a veces once y media de la noche. Me encuentro en Burlington, dándole transporte a esas personas de regreso a Chelsea. Y ahí de verdad que hemos encontrado mucha necesidad, o me encantaría hablar con ustedes más tarde.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Mendoza Mercado. I am a resident in Chelsea, three eighteen Chestnut Street. I am a first grade teacher at the Kelly School and the vice president of the Chelsea Teachers Union. I don't have formal remarks, but I did want to share my experience that I had with a couple of ICE agents on October sixteenth while they were parked using our school parking lots. That morning, students, that morning, we received a report through the Luce Chat that people were reporting suspicious vehicles that were parked in the parking lot that is further away from the school, but still a school faculty parking lot. Family members eventually were told of that information, but it wasn't until about one PM, when the initial reports happened, around eight in the morning. I'm here to share the story because it's important that we're proactively communicating with our families when we know that there is ICE or federal agents present near or on school property. We want to make sure that our families are aware of the, of what is around them and the precautions that they'll need as they're thinking about picking up their students or their children from school. It's important that the city council make sure that we are listening to the Luce requests, that we are not allowing ICE agents to use municipal parking lots or other spaces because this is how we can build trust and let the community know that we are here, we see you, and we are protecting you because you are an important part of our community. It also then reassures our students that we are here to protect them. As a teacher, my number-one job is to keep you safe, and we cannot do that if you're coming to school worried that your parents may not, may not be there when they are picking you up. So I just wanted to share that it has happened, and we need to address these concerns because it's, it's not just us here, but it's our students who see it every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Alguien más? Someone else?
Hi, my name is Joan Manetz. I live on Lower Broadway, close to the court, and I, I really like Chelsea for its diversity, and we really should understand that the eighty percent foreign-born doesn't come for nothing. So we really have to step up to do our very best, not only everything, we have to go beyond everything to really create a neighborhood and a community of trust. We have to go beyond everything to really create a neighborhood and a community of trust. And we don't see that trust. I'm frequently doing court watches at Chelsea Court and I recently want to share a story where I recently have accompanied a neighbor. And she was, she was thinking back and forth whether she's going to renew the restraining order that she had or not because she was afraid that ICE is being called on her by this ex-partner. And that is really not a very nice situation to be in. And I know that a lot of neighbors have these struggles. So not only is it a very painful situation to go through by yourself. And that day, I have spotted a person in the court who was clearly identifiable as ICE. And having that, that process for her going through and then at the same time having to be concerned whether to be picked up by ICE for simply trying to protect yourself and not really knowing what's the worst enemy there. So fortunately, she was able, we were able to get her out of the court and back home safely. However, other people were picked up that day and there were students just trying to set their record straight. People are not criminals and people deserve a due process. And going to court and setting their record straight should be a due process. And we see a lot of collaboration and we see a lot of peaceful transfers. And it's not peaceful. It looks like collaboration and it does not help building the trust of the community. And we really, you probably can guess from my accent, I grew up in Germany. I've seen those history books. Silence and complicity will not be on your side. We have to go above and beyond to get ICE out of Chelsea. And we really have to make sure that we implement each and every point of that petition because in this community, we have to be first out there to really show what building a community, a protected community looks like. Thank you.
Alguien más? Anyone else?
Hi, good evening. My name is Juliana Morris. I live at Eight Orient Avenue in East Boston. I am a primary care provider of adults and children at the MGH Chelsea Health Center. I'm speaking here as myself, not showing the views of my employer. I just wanted to comment briefly. I mean, I think it's kind of evident how everything that's going on is impacting the health of our community. The increased rates of mental illness, the impact of stress on chronic disease. You know, I have many patients who have lost loved ones to the, to the system, to detention or deportation. The impact that that's having on their health is incredible. The, what I wanted to comment on specifically right now in terms of building trust is what the current climate is leading to. In terms of people even being able to take care of their health, we are seeing a lot of people not coming into their appointments, canceling their appointments. I've had patients tell me directly, I didn't go to my appointment because I heard that ICE was at Market Basket. You know, that's just the people that we hear from. There are a lot more people that are just kind of fallen off and we don't know what's happening with them, what's happening with their health if they're simply just too afraid to come in. So just thinking in terms of the public, obviously, most important is the health impact on those individuals that are suffering. And thinking about the public health impacts on our community if we're not able to adequately reach people and take care of their health needs because of their fear to leave their homes or come into the clinic. There was also an incident, I don't remember the specific day, right next to our clinic where there was staging ground and ICE was transferring people. So things like that also worsen the whole level of trust. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Fran Riznowski. I live at eleven Cottage Street in Chelsea. And I'm the granddaughter of an immigrant who came to the US when he was seventeen years old. And if he came in this day and age to Chelsea or anywhere else in the United States, he would be threatened. He would be threatened with a lack of due process? Let me start over. He would be threatened with being arrested and with lack of due process and probably end up in jail with no criminal record. We heard that from Jose, we heard it from Elda. It is happening over and over and over again. I've been in Chelsea courts where the judge has told people, I know the case of two specific people because I witnessed their arrest. They are eighteen and twenty-three years old. The judge said, go home. ICE was waiting in our courtroom, they were masked. Under no circumstances should people be masked in our courtrooms. They were masked, they took the people out and the parents had no idea where they were for weeks. Many of you in this subcommittee, in this council are parents. Can you imagine what it was like? Your child goes to court, your child goes to work, your child is coming home from school and they never come home. And you have no idea as to where it is. And we can be told by ICE, all you have to do is have their name, their address and their A number and you will know immediately where they are, except that does not happen. What I'm hearing from people, it takes two to three to four days. Lawyers don't even know where these people are. So back on October twenty-ninth and again in November, mid-November, this, the ICE Out of Chelsea, which was a petition that came from Chelsea Luce, was sent to the leaders in this room, elected officials as well as, what we heard was that a number of people did not get it. And so I just want to go over a couple of the points, which they are. Municipal property, under no circumstances do we want ICE being on elementary school playground, parking lots. We don't want them at the high school parking lot. We don't want them at the middle school parking lots. We don't want them at city hall parking lots. If they have no business in those municipal areas, they should have no right to be there. The second one that I want to point out has to do with fingerprinting. There's been an issue with minors being fingerprinted as soon as they get to the police station. And again, I want you to imagine what it's like if you're a parent. Unfortunately, your kid ends up in the police station. You go to get your child, they are not there because ICE has already hauled them off. This is something that we can do in our city and I think also it should be happening statewide. The last one that I want to share is no cooperation with ICE. We need to clarify and codify the police non-cooperation with ICE. People have seen ICE agents and our police officers drinking coffee and Dunkin' Donuts. Under no circumstances should that be happening on work hours. Off of work time, none of us has anything to say with it. But if you're working as law enforcement in Chelsea, you should not be interacting with ICE. So I would encourage people, if you've not seen that, please let us know. We'll make sure that everyone has it. I am proposing that we have a subcommittee so that you can review this and see, are there some ordinances that we can have in Chelsea? And once again, I want to hope that Chelsea can be an example for the rest of the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Three minutes, right? Saliente de Escobas Caraballo, twenty-two Garish Avenue. And how do I go after that? So I will be brief. As a mother, as a school committee member, as a fellow longtime resident and a concerned resident, I empathize. I will do my best to state everything that I want to as eloquently and as... Well, let's just cut to the chase. How can we create, how can we talk about collaboration when we have been cherry picking who we invite to the table? Because in Puerto Rico, eso se llama charlatanería. My friend, I can say that you're also in that. Because when we're standing here and calling out someone who's actually being fair for pointing out that your time is up, charlatanería, we can't sit here and say that you're being silenced because you don't like that your time is up. If my time is up when she says, hey, Clari, your time is up, my time is up. All I'm saying is sometimes equity is unfair and we have to examine where we stand. That fact that ICE has been running rampant in our city, it is unfortunate. But unfortunately, that is not our purview at the moment. Do I agree with it? No. But do we all have to sit at a long table where it's going to be messy? Yes. Is it fair to say that our police department has not been leading well before this has come to the table? Hell yeah, that is unfair. Because our police department has been doing things very differently before this situation has come up. Since 2017, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, Counselor Jimenez, that was what our police department, our chief of police, when he sat with you via Zoom at the, at your meeting or at your hearing, he said, Chelsea has been doing things differently. We have been considering juveniles when it comes to fingerprinting. We have been going before the state house when it comes to you guys advocating. You have advocating, advocated for a different situation, the different circumstances in many different forms. When it comes to our school department, I don't believe that it should just be the purview of our Chelsea Teachers Union to advocate alone because we have our superintendent who can speak for our leadership. That is not just a one collective bar, a unit, you know? I literally was in my pajamas with my children. I asked my sister to please send her up so that I could come here and speak. I am just one member of the committee, so I do not speak for all of my, my school committee members. That is not my purview. But I can speak for myself, for my district, for some of my members and say that yes, enroll my list down. But fear mongering is not going to help. As last time that I, that I understood, the deportations, it's been self-deportation because people are scared. So if we're not reporting accurately, if we're sitting there and telling the wrong information because lack of accountability for our, from our so-called city leaders, the people that our community has learned to trust is not giving accurate information, not putting out the resources that our community members, that our leadership has given out, that they have taken the time to do and construct a insane amount of research to put together, then it's not fair. But there's resources out there at our, at our website. So let's be fair because if not, charlatanería. Thank you.
Thank you, Clari. Anyone else here for the public speaking portion? Going once, there we go.
You know, I saw these people, my name is Craig Murphy, Fifty Boatswain's Way in beautiful Chelsea. I saw these people out there today and, you know, seeing everything on the news and I may or may not have papers. You, 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 you also may not have papers. But if ICE came in this room, I'm safe. So what I see, and it hasn't been said out here, but I know we all feel it, this is blatant racism. The way they're going after this, taking children out of school, it's just racism, it's hate. And to be part of America that sees this is really hard for me to live here and enjoy it. You know, I was lucky enough when I first moved to Chelsea, I was at La Faja and I met this gentleman who closed his doors in Columbia and walked three hundred miles to meet me for a beer at La Faja. And he, he works hard, he's a mason. And there's, there's, there's different ways of doing this, right? They could just simply look at a person like this who would leave his house and come to Chelsea and have a beer with Craig after three hundred miles and say, boom, you're American. You know, if you're going to work that hard to be here, we should just allow it. There is much better ways and more profitable ways of handling this than giving billions of dollars to ICE. But just to make these people with no criminal records and people who work here and, and be part of the community and do what they can, move them right to American ships and have them be a full community member, it is really hard to see this. So I just want to say that from the bottom of my heart, I'm so sorry that I see this from our country. And I, you know, one last thing, I look at those boats coming from, you know, Venezuela and other ones and being shot with no due process and these people are talking about no due process. It's the same bloody thing. And then when they shot that boat twice with the two people that were swimming on the sides, that just shows you that the level of hate that a good portion of this country has right now. We in Chelsea should stand up. Everyone in Chelsea should stand up because this is wrong. It doesn't matter what your beliefs are in this situation, but human dignity does count and we're not seeing it today.
Thank you, sir. Would you like to say a few words?
Hi, my name is Joan Paulo Ferreira. I'm a East Boston resident, but I've been to Chelsea a number of times. I go to Market Basket all the time, get my haircuts here, played Metro Lacrosse when it used to be in Chelsea, over here, played soccer games over here, spent my whole life, you know, East Boston, Chelsea. And, you know, one of the things that I kind of want to think about and also direct to the council too is, you know, what's the point of being a sanctuary city if we're not being a sanctuary city? If we're still seeing, you know, the court officials, if we're still seeing, you know, police department, you know, collaborating with ICE, you know, directly, indirectly. You know, how was someone like Thomas Ambrosino, for example, back in August? I, I was working with some, some, some of the organizers here at Luce and they brought to attention that Thomas Ambrosino had, had told them that, hey, you know, ICE, you know, they can secretly, you know, use, right, the, the, the court's, you know, office, or not offices, but they basically told people that, you know, they can't stay inside, you know, waiting for folks, but they can still be stationed, you know, in the perimeter, in the actual building of ICE. And people have still seen ICE, you know, coming out in their vans outside of the district court. And Thomas Ambrosino, all of you guys know him, you know, for the most part, right? He was the city manager, he's, I believe, you know, the district court official. You know, many of you guys have definitely had multiple interactions with him, Leo Robinson, other city councils as well. Someone who was applauded here is still allowed, you know, to work, you know, or allow something like this to happen. And so what I, what I really want to ask the city council is, how can we let other public officials, you know, violate, you know, the, the rules and, you know, the, I guess, the sanctity of being a sanctuary city, right? Your constituents, right, count on you guys, right, to maintain that justice and order? And that's why we need this petition to be signed. But ultimately, why does a petition even need to get signed in the first place when this shouldn't even be happening? And I think there needs to be, you know, also concrete action taken at public officials within the police department and the court as well in order to, you know, bring this to attention and actually show force. And, you know, punishing people for violating what it means to be a sanctuary city. And direct action needs to be taken. And this petition should get signed. It needs to get signed in order to really, you know, stand up to what's happening across the nation and also to really show that you guys support. and also to really show that you guys support the constituents of this city. But there needs to be, you know, more action, you know, ahead of that for, you know, public officials that are violating, you know, this sanctity of being a sanctuary city and, you know, violating this petition of having, you know, ICE on municipal property. And I'll end it there. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Jasmine Castellón, 164 Spencer Ave. I live and work in Chelsea. This is my community and has been since I was young. I'm here because I've been doing this work with Luce since that incident with the teenagers that went straight from CPS to the police station and out the back, handed over to ICE, all because they were fingerprinted. And let me tell you, seeing a CPD officer open that door for an ICE car, that back door, to me, it was devastating to see. It crushed my trust, as it does for many members in the community. And same thing happens at the courthouse constantly. I'm here because I was there when ICE walked right into that same courthouse and grabbed another set of teenagers out of a courtroom where they had just been released because they didn't have lawyers. They were released because they wouldn't have had due process without that and then detained, kidnapped really, by ICE without due process. I'm here because I've seen the fear in my friends, my family, my community, myself, to go to that same courthouse, to go to even City Hall, anywhere, any municipal properties, people are scared. I'm here because I was at the school, fearing that for every child in elementary school as ICE was circling the parking lot, the elementary school. I'm here because my community is being terrorized, because I get calls on a weekly, sometimes daily basis, about mutual aid for families that have just lost their breadwinners. For, I get calls for letters speaking about family members for their characters to try to get them out of detention centers like Burlington. This petition is based on what people that are out there every day, talking to folks in the community, responding to ICE sightings. And these are the protections and the holes that we see in our sanctuary protections. Believe me when I say this will help everything in this petition, including pushing the state and the court to pass some of these, some more of these protections and trailblazing that for the state and giving business owners, the police and other municipal leaders encouragement and tools to protect the community that really is truly under attack. And that's why I strongly urge you to pass these protections. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Okay, so before concluding, I just, oh, yep.
Good evening, everyone. Mi amor, baja el micrófono un poquitito. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Joseline Oriano.
My name is Joseline Oriano.
Soy una inmigrante que vino a Chelsea, a Estados Unidos desde que tenía 18 años.
I'm an immigrant who came to the United States, to Chelsea, since I was 18 years old.
Hecho una familia en Chelsea, hijos.
I had a family, I have a family in Chelsea, in the United States.
Y por muchos años, puedo decir que viví feliz, segura, tranquila en Chelsea.
For many years, I can say I lived like happy and safe in Chelsea.
Y cuando todo esto empezó con ICE, deseabas que todo inmigrante en Estados Unidos tuviera una ciudad como Chelsea.
When, what's happened with ICE lately? I'm sorry, can you, puedes decir la última que pasó?
Yo soñaba con que cada inmigrante en Estados Unidos tuviera una ciudad como Chelsea.
Yeah, I dreamed for every, like, immigrant in the United States have a city like Chelsea.
En septiembre de este año, en septiembre 18, ICE arrestó a dos familiares míos.
In September 18, ICE arrested two family members.
Dos hombres, padres, trabajadores.
Two men, fathers, workers.
Sin ningún récord criminal.
Without any criminal record.
Y fue algo muy duro para vivir como familia.
And it was something very hard to live like a family.
Gracias a Dios ellos salieron, los dos.
Thanks God, they been out, both of them.
Pero sé que esa no es la realidad de muchas personas que son arrestadas hoy día.
Hey, I know, this is not the case for many others, other people who gets arrested every day.
Y solo me gustaría decir a las personas presentes en esta sala hoy.
And I just want to say to other people present here in this room.
Que no solo somos inmigrantes.
That we are not just immigrants.
Somos personas.
We are a person, or are, say, like, human being.
Somos soñadores, trabajadores humildes.
We are workers, dreamers.
We're humble people.
Humble people.
And we just came here to dream, to work for our dreams, to look for a better life for our families. And I was here a few days ago on another meeting, and I was hearing of a lot of business owners of Chelsea seeking for help because their businesses are struggling too with all this situation. And that made me think that as immigrants, we are also contributing to this city. We are working, we are going to restaurants, to local shops. Joseline, mi amor, si puedes terminar esta última, no te quiero interrumpir, pero ya el tiempo se acabó. Sí. And I just wanted to tell that we want to live safe and we just want to work and contribute to the city. Gracias.
Last call. No? Okay, and so before we conclude, I just want to repeat what I always repeat, and that is that we don't enter conversations after our public hearing, but we do wish to enter conversations individually with you all. So please reach out to us, give us a call. Thank you, Fran, for sharing the points on the email that was sent out. We look forward to continuing this conversation. Quiero compartir lo que siempre comparto todo el tiempo y es que aquí no, usualmente no se puede continuar la conversación, pero eso no quiere decir que nosotros no queremos escuchar de ustedes. Así sea, llámenos, mándenos correo, esta conversación va a continuar. Y en términos de la reunión, va a haber anuncio de nuestro compañero Jiménez más adelante en la agenda. Claro que sí, mi amor, yes. So she wants to hand it out so that we all have what we received via email.
Madam President.
Councilor Jimenez?
I would like to move out of order to move the item discussing this petition, item 25130, out of order, under suspension, if there's no objection.
I see no objection. Or I do, counselor? No? Okay, yeah.
So just for the folks still here, I don't know if you want to just let them know that we are discussing this?
Brevemente anuncios, por favor, a los que están aquí. Al público que está presente, no se vayan, por favor. Si están presentes, esperen un momentito. El concejal Jiménez quiere sacar de orden la conversación para que ustedes escuchen lo que se va a platicar. So no se tienen que ir tan rápido, vamos a platicar ahorita mismo, lo que ustedes acaban de compartir con nosotros. Counselor? Sorry, clerk?
Moved out of order, order introduced by Councilor Jimenez Rivera. Order that a meeting of Subcommittee on Conference be held to discuss requests made by the ICE out of Chelsea petition, sent to the city council by Luce Immigration Justice Network of Massachusetts, and any follow-up activities related to the ongoing federal immigration and customs enforcement presence in Chelsea.
Thank you, clerk. Counselor Jimenez?
Apologies, I would like to move this to the Subcommittee on Conference, and I'd like to speak on it, if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, counselor.
So I just want to thank everyone who came to speak, especially those of you who are directly impacted by this. And just for context, I was named earlier about a Zoom with Chief Houghton. I just want to mention what that was. There was a hearing at the State House for the Safe Communities Act, which would codify statewide many of the things that we already do in Chelsea, so that is what that was. Now, I don't think it's a surprise to anybody here that Chelsea has been a target of the Trump administration and that many of our families have been broken up, some of them illegally, and our residents are constantly being terrorized by the mere presence of ICE on our streets. Although the Trump administration says that this is about public safety, those of us who work with our police and with impacted community members know that this is making our city less safe. Community trust is essential to keeping our city safe so that our residents, regardless of their immigration status, believe that they can reach out to CPD when they need to. Otherwise, we're just creating opportunities for domestic violence, child abuse, negligent driving, and so many others to go unchecked because the people suffering don't feel safe going to the police. The priority of CPD is to keep Chelsea safe, and that begins with trust. We've worked hard in Chelsea to earn that trust, and over the past 11 months, we have not felt our community is safer. We are losing that trust because of the overreach of an anti-immigrant federal government that would rather turn our hardworking residents into political pawns that they are willing to dispose of. I want to thank Luce and the organizers of this petition for holding us accountable to doing everything in our power to protect the residents of Chelsea. Some of these asks are to just codify longstanding practices in our city. Some of them we're going to have to look into, if and how, to best implement them so that we can have the greatest impact in restoring trust and in increasing public safety. That is why I'm moving to hold the Subcommittee on this, which should involve the organizers here, Chelsea Police, our legal department, and all the members of the council. That way, we can best hash out what we are allowed to do, what our community would like for us to do, and ultimately, what the council would like to move forward with. This isn't about federal policy, it's about Chelsea policy and how we care for our residents, all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor, okay, I'll go down, we'll start with Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want, again, the Chelsea City Council, the Chelsea State City Police, the schools. We've been working with what we call the police in blue, where we go out, we work with community houses of worship throughout because we believe different houses of worship allows you to meet different people. And so, you know, to say that the city is not doing something, I mean, it's things that by statute, local, federal statutes that we're bound to. But more importantly, we go out throughout this year. We've been to a number of places where we've actually had meetings to engage folks and ask people to be embraced in these meetings to find out how we can be more approachable and find out more about these activities. Some of the things we hear are alarming, some of the things we hear are very sad. But again, our police department by no means, from what we're told, are playing any favoritism or meeting with ICE about deportations and trying to go up and do something wrong. I'm looking forward to this meeting, that we can work with our community, the members of the community here that like to present this resolution, to find out how collectively, collaboratively, that we can actually work together and continue to strengthen our community. We've had hundreds of folks throughout the last two months meeting with the police. And that's a big start because now folks, they see us as local police officers and local officials gathering to hear their testimony. These testimonies we heard here tonight were very, you know, very heart wrenching. And I'm sure everyone here felt a little sorrow. But we as elected officials are doing as much and as much as the law allow us to do, to continue to hold off any fingerprinting of anyone. I mean, there's certain statutes you can't hold off fingerprinting. There's certain activities when someone get arrested, certain things have to take place. But by, our police department is working with our city and our local officials and our schools to try to do it. If it's a, you know, hit and run, we're not taking you to jail. We're not taking you to get fingerprinted and stuff like that. There's certain things that the public should know that we just can't cross the federal line and the state lines. Thank you.
Counselor Cali Garcia?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank those who have spoken tonight. Le quiero dar la gracia a la gente que presentaron su historia. Sé que eso no fue fácil. Y gracias de corazón por traer a la luz lo que es, lo que sucede. No. I want to thank again the members who spoke tonight, who brought to light and to to this courtroom, not courtroom, Lord Jesus, to the City Hall Chamber, thank you. Your story, it is, it takes a lot of courage. I want to highlight and shout out the Luce community and Fran, who texted me like, hey, did you see the petition? Quick story, Fran and I go way back. My mom took care of her daughter, and so she was like, hey, did you sign the petition? I'm like, what petition? So I know that a lot of us on the council did not receive the petition. I proudly signed the petition as soon as it arrives in my email. And I want you to know that I am committed to supporting and keeping our community safe at all costs. And so I will be in support, I will definitely be in attendance of this meeting, and I look forward to the many conversations that need to be had. While I agree with Counselor Brown, to a certain extent, I think we could do more. And so thank you for pushing us and for holding us accountable. Le quiero dar la gracia a la gente que están aquí. Y también le quiero decir que algunos de nosotros no recibimos la petición y cuando lo recibí, lo filmé y estoy en apoyo. Voy a ser parte de todas las conversaciones acerca de cómo vamos a mantener nuestra comunidad segura y gracias.
Counselor Tanaydi Garcia?
Hi, good evening. I hardly have a voice up here with me, sorry. I want to echo the sentiment of everyone who just spoke. I also want to say you did an excellent job translating. Wow, okay. But I also want to mention that we have been working and we have been thinking of our community. I've personally have been, you know, studying how Chicago's mayor has been working and many orders have been passed to protect families. And we are definitely in the talks of protecting our community. We are with this community, we are part of this community. And the least thing that we want to do is have our children be at harm, especially our, everyone, but to think that a child is frightened at school and terrified of losing their parents is insane. And we shouldn't be living through these times, but here we are. But thank you, Luce, thank you to our residents. And this has been an emotional roller coaster for the whole community. And we are here, Fran, we are here in support, so thank you.
Counselor Todd Taylor?
So I want to actually thank Counselor
So I want to actually thank Counselor Jimenez for calling for this Subcommittee. I think that, I've been calling for subcommittees on a great number of topics. I'm glad he's interested in this one, so that's great. This is a subject that needs to be discussed. I think there is a great misunderstanding among the public about what the laws are, about the roles of certain levels of government, and what supersedes what. So I can tell you that the City of Chelsea has done just about everything, including suing the federal government to, you know, try to aid those undocumented people in Chelsea. So we need to understand the limitations of what the city can do. If you, like Counselor Jimenez had said, that, you know, this Zoom call that he was on was to advocate at the State House. The State House is where you're going to get more of the remedies to this problem than the City of Chelsea. The City of Chelsea is already doing everything that it can do. And as for collaboration with the Chelsea Police and ICE, there is no collaboration. And if people, if activists want to say that there's collaboration because the Chelsea Police are merely upholding the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that's their privilege to try to do that, but that's misinformation. So I would urge everybody, no matter what your view on all of this is, to stay calm, not to, you know, gin up fear about all of this more than there needs to be. And let's have a discussion about what actually can be done and what can't be done by the City of Chelsea. I agree, the Subcommittee should not be on federal policy. We have zero control over that. It should be on the policy of Chelsea and what, if anything, can be done about that. And please, if you disagree with, I mean, I understand people being upset about a situation. But when things are beyond the control of this body, there's nothing we can really do. So let's sit down and talk about it. I advocate, this is how we ought to approach all of our problems here in Chelsea, not just this one. People care about this one, but there's a lot of other problems going on too that we need to address, and we should be doing it in the same way.
Okay, if I may have permission to speak from the chair briefly? Okay, thank you. I'll just highlight real quickly, we've been seeing a lot of advocates. You know, some are from nonprofits, some are caseworkers, some are actual victims. Tonight is the first night I hear from a healthcare worker, and I think it's so important that we continue to expand to all the different fields that can voice and advocate for our families. We're all impacted, but to hear a room full of teachers and to hear that individual who spoke from MGH Chelsea is huge. So thank you so much for the effort to mobilizing this evening to the Luce community. Thank you. The conversation continues. All right, moving on now to our approval of the minutes. All right, seeing no objections. Thank you, Counselor Brown.
We'll move on to communications from the City Manager.
Your first communication received from the City Manager regarding mattress disposal fee effective February 1, 2026. Dear Counselors, I am writing to inform you of an important upcoming change regarding the disposal of mattresses and box springs. Effective February 1, 2026, the City of Chelsea will no longer provide free mattress disposal. This decision, while difficult, is necessary to address the rising costs associated with waste management and the especially high expense of mattress recycling. Since the statewide mattress disposal law took effect in 2022, Chelsea has incurred over $200,000 per year in mattress disposal costs. We have additionally received reports that residents of neighboring communities, as well as certain property management companies, are taking advantage of our free service by bringing mattresses into Chelsea for disposal. This cost is ultimately borne by Chelsea taxpayers, and has become increasingly challenging to sustain free disposal while responsibly managing the city's overall budget.
Madam President, move to wave the rest of the reading and accept and file under communication if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, Counselor. Thank you. Moving on to the next item. Counselor Brown, you have the floor.
Again, this is just for the public. This is a, this is legislation that the City Manager want to have a discussion, and also before we move, after we have that discussion, we'll have a public hearing on it because it requires an increase of the fee. Last three years, we had these matches. We've been free for the last three years, and we've seen an uptick of just matches all around here. We believe that all these matches are not coming from our community. The folks feel that, hey, these matches picked up in Chelsea free. Why don't we go from top floor to side to center in Chelsea? I'm positive, man. I believe the recommendation will be $25 for local folks and for businesses, hotels, and so on, who would be cost $40. So I look forward to, first, the meeting, and also, second, the public hearing, that the public can come and address it and talk about if the fee is feasible or not. But again, we pay a lot of money for this here, and so we have to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to the next item.
Next communication received regarding grant recommendations from the Community Preservation Committee. Dear Counselors, the Chelsea Community Preservation Committee is pleased to send to the City Council four recommendations for grants from the Community Preservation Fund. At the 2016 general election, 66.5% of Chelsea voters voted to adopt the provisions of the Community Preservation Act and impose a 1.5% surcharge on residential and commercial properties, with exemptions for low and moderate income homeowners, as well as an exemption on the first $100,000 of property value. On December 19, 2016, the Chelsea City Council voted to establish the ordinance to establish the Community Preservation Committee to make recommendations on expenditures authorized by the Community Preservation Act. The recommendations of the committee are sent to the City Council, where amounts can be affirmed, rejected, or lowered. Funding recommended-
Madam President, move to wave the rest of the reading and accept and file under communication if there are no objections. And yeah, if we could just read the amounts for the four projects.
Okay, can we proceed with reading the amount, and then Counselor Vercuberl has the floor.
The four proposed grant funding requests are as follows. Stitching Against the Heat for $50,000. Creekside Commons Park Rehab and Renovation for $200,000. Fitzpatrick Bradville Pre-Development for $200,000. And TND's Top Off Rental Assistance for $50,000.
Thank you, clerk. Counselor Vercuberl, you have the floor.
I believe this is a bunch of crap. All these things, I know excuse my language, and it might be the wrong way to approach it. But for years, I pay CPA, and every time, it's the same organizations. They get the same money. Why don't they give some of this money to the people? Like fixing their homes, the ones that can't afford it. But I don't see them giving money. But by state law, they can't do that. That's what I was told. So my money goes to the same ones. I don't understand here. There's something here for $200,000, right? What is it over here? Fitzpatrick Bradville Development. Now, why are we paying them $200,000? For what? Why are we giving them the money? I know they're going to do. It's the same thing. Like, isn't the housing authority part of the state? Doesn't the state fund them? So I don't understand why we're paying for them. Why don't you help the poor people that need it? There's a fund, people don't know, but there is a fund, you know, that if you are low-income and you can't afford to fix your home, you go downstairs, and they will give you money. But in five years, only two people have gotten, maybe four people have gotten it. But all the time, the same people that apply keep getting these grants. Why? Because that's how the system made it. The system made it where the average individual cannot get it. It only goes to the same individuals. And I'm tired of that. I don't care who gets mad at me and who says, oh, Vercuberl, you talk. I don't talk. I talk for the average individual. He's the one that needs it, not these corporations and not these organizations that keep getting the same thing. Help the poor man. He's the one that gives it to you. And we hear this so much. Why don't they explain what these things are like? Do the people know what stitching against heat means? What does that mean? You know, I know what that means. They want a cooling program. The whole point I'm trying to make is, excuse the way I present it to you. It might be inappropriate. It might not be the right way to present it to you. I could present it to you in an eloquent way, but that's not me. I don't talk that way. I'm going to tell you how it is, and that's all there is to it. And this is how it is. The average individual does not get nothing. It's everybody else that knows how to use the system that gets it. Isn't it about time yous understand and really understand how it works? That's my money. The CPA is my money, all of us that own homes. But why can't the people that own homes use it? Because the state says you can't. Maybe we should change it where the people that contribute can take some back for what they give. If they can't afford it, who's going to help them? Or go to the bank and get a mortgage? Is that it? Why is there a month of time I have to speak?
I'm just wondering if we're going to reach the end at any point.
Yes, I'm going to reach the end in a few minutes. Here's the bottom line. The bottom line is this. Every time you see these grants come up, you come, and you look who gets them. And then you tell me if it's fair and how the system is set up. The system is not set up for the average person. It's set up for the ones that know how to use the system, and the average individual does not. That's all I'm trying to say, is we pay. I'm an average individual. All the people I represent are average individuals. They should deserve and get something, just like the ones that know how to use the system. Maybe that's our job. Our job is maybe to see that they get it. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Todd Taylor.
So I just, I would just like to say that the counselor actually hits near the mark on some of this stuff. I was originally, for the record, I was originally against the Community Preservation Act for this reason, is that this is an extra tax. And now that we have established that tax, which the state was originally supposed to kick in money, which it basically has not, and so we're stuck with an extra tax. The money has to be spent. So then we have to look around for who's going to come up with a project where that money has to be spent. And inevitably, and I know because I was at one time on the Community Preservation Commission as a member of the Planning Board, this is the worst way. The intent was good. The intent was to have more green space and to have more affordable housing. But what it boils down to is that we could have done all of this on our own. We're not getting any money from the state, and it's an extra tax that we're just, you know, basically, they're siphoning off that extra tax into the usual suspects of community organizations. So I think that we do need to take a look at whether Chelsea wants to continue to support the Community Preservation Act. I think it's a bad deal for Chelsea, but I would say this. As long as we're going to have the Community Preservation Act, we need to put more funds into historical preservation. It gets its obligated 10% every year, and they go on their merry way. I was just at the Chelsea Public Library during Reading Day, and I went to go see the archive. It is in complete disarray. The documents are deteriorating. We need to spend money on the preservation of our history instead of cramming one more building into Chelsea. One more affordable housing building. Let's take care of preserving our history, preserving the documents that sorely need to be preserved, to hire a professional archivist, and yes, to establish a Chelsea museum so that we can have a place where our grandchildren and their grandchildren can learn about the history of this great city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. If I may have permission to speak briefly, Counselor Brown.
I wasn't, I was not going to speak, but again, this is actually really good for our community. These dollars that the council has already appropriated. The first one, we talk about stitching against the heat. I mean, this is work to help out our seniors. This is something that our seniors use. This is something that we work in the Community Development Department and Chelsea Senior Citizen, and also the climax, to work with the climax in lower temperatures and stuff, not just sprinkle systems in the park. We talk about the Fitzpatrick. That's our renovation. You're talking about poor people living in deplorable situations. Now, this is increasing. This is going to improve their living situation and improve the building and the work that we want to see and the dignity that we want to offer for folks. You're talking about green space. People are talking about green space. You see this in this $200,000 appropriation. This is the Creek Commons Rehab. We want folks to be able to go out and look at our parks and sit in our parks and enjoy our parks. We have to invest in our parks. This is, all these things here really, it's four of them. And the definition, if anyone wants to read it, it's right in our notes. This is something that we really, and more so, it comes from the public. The public, we voted on this preservation to take the 1.5% and the money to go back and to enhance in our community. So that's a vote that was taken by the public, and that's something that we should honor and also support. So just wanted to say that, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. If I may please have permission to speak from the chair? Thank you, Counselors. City Manager, would you be able to please share with us your process of outreach and also clarify how the CPC is currently functioning in terms of funding and matches with the state?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you, Counselor.
If there's no objections.
Thank you, Council President. The state is providing an 18% match. Initially, when the CPA funds were rolled out, it was about 40%. And the reason why it is in decline is the more communities join, right, then the farther those dollars have to be stretched. The state made it so that the matching funds are made from a fee that is paid at the registry of deeds, which I think signals that the matching fund will be there forever, basically. But it is true that the percentage of match has been in decline. I just looked it up, and for FY '25, the match was 18%, right? So for every dollar that we put in, the state give us 18 cents, basically. So we have a Community Preservation Committee. It's made up of a lot of residents. They have two funding rounds, one in the spring and one in the fall. The fundings are open to anyone. Of course, it's an application that is complicated, right? And you have to do a lot of contract documents, absolutely. So it lends itself to be more prone for organized entities to get it, right? I mean, absolutely. But it's no different than doing any business with the city, right? I mean, it requires a legal entity and an ability to accept funds. Back and forth. I will tell you that when I was in DBW, we used these funds for restoring the statues out front, right? I will tell you that when I was in DBW, we, we use these funds for, uh, restoring the statues out front, right? We use the, the, the funds for, uh, renovating our parks. Uh, and it's no different than what, what is being, it has been today. Ultimately, the, um, the committee has discretion, right? And, and, and they interview the, the, um, the applicants, uh, and they grade them, right? In terms of, uh, what they think is, i- i- is a good match on the, um, on, on the funding. Obviously, it, it is up to the council to approve this funding. If, if the council feels that, that, uh, all of these projects are not worth funding, it, it is at the council's discretion to deny that funding. The, the practice in the past is that, uh, uh, the recommendations of the committee are sent to Ways and Means. Uh, and at Ways and Means, uh, uh, we, it gives an opportunity for the city council to learn more about each project. And we invite the committee and the applicants to attend these meetings and answer any questions, right? Uh, I will tell you that, that, uh, um, in looking at, at two of the bigger, uh, funding projects, they are projects that the city council is very well aware of. One of them i- i- is the, the renovation of our Creekside Common Park. It, it is a, a, a city on park. Uh, and what we are doing essentially is renovating a portion of, of the park. Uh, um, the other project, which is, is the bigger funding of a portion, uh, it, it is, uh, supporting the renovation of, of, of the Prattville property in, uh, um, uh, in Prattville, the, the Chelsea Housing Authority property. So it is both projects that we are, are well aware of and have been talking about. Of course, it is at the city council's discretion to deny these projects.
Thank you, city manager. Um, I would like to continue on if there, if there is someone who has not spoken and would like to speak. Councillor Teshi. Um, can I get a point of clarity from our clerk on our rule number eight?
City Council Rule Eight states, one councillor may yield his or her time to the maker of a motion if the five-minute time is insufficient. Technically, there is no motion before you, it's a communication. So technically, there is no councillor who has precedence to be given an extra yielding of time. So it's my opinion that the request is invalid.
Thank you. Councillor Veracopero, I would ask that we please continue on with the agenda, it's lengthy. I, um, I thank you for always having, uh, longer responses so that our public can be informed. Um, that is also precisely why I wanted our city manager to go up to the podium and share more clarity. Thank you to everyone who has spoken, this is very important, but we can also have these discussions later on. Um, let's continue on with the next item on the agenda.
Next communication from the city manager providing an update on Chelsea Electricity Choice. Dear councillors, I am writing to share with you the October 2025 Program Report for Chelsea Electricity Choice, our community electricity aggregation program. The program continues to deliver exceptional value to our residents and small businesses. And the latest data demonstrates just how impactful this initiative has become. Since the launch of Chelsea Electricity Choice in June 2024, the program has generated over $2.2 million in total cost savings for our community. These savings reflect actual reductions in electricity costs compared to what customers would have paid had they remained on EverSource's basic service supply. Residential customers saved nearly $1.4 million and small business customers saved nearly $850,000. These financial numbers are not theoretical estimates, but real dollars retained by residents and small businesses. Just as important as the saving-
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file under communication. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, thank you councillor, moving on.
Next communication received, providing an annual report from Director of Athletics and Sports Tourism. Dear councillors, I am writing to share the annual report developed by our Director of Athletics and Sports Tourism, Charlie Giuffrida. Mr. Giuffrida's work over the past year has exceeded expectations and delivered exactly what the council envisioned through Council Order 24105 filed in May of 2024. That order directed the city manager to develop a position dedicated to strengthening athletics in Chelsea, providing additional support to our leagues and increasing opportunities for our young people to engage in sports. I am proud that Mr. Giuffrida has more than fulfilled this charge. In a short time, Mr. Giuffrida has revitalized the athletic landscape in Chelsea. His leadership has helped create an environment of growth, collaboration, and shared success for all leagues in our city. He has strengthened communication among league organizers, fostered cooperative planning, and ensured that every league, new or longstanding, has access to city support. One of Giuffrida's most impactful contributions has been his ability to expand the city's access to new forms of funding. Through targeted outreach to regional partners and coordination with philanthropic organizations, he has secured equipment donations and financial resources that were previously unavailable to the city. These efforts have not only supported our leagues today, but have helped build a foundation for long-term sustainability. Just as importantly, Mr. Giuffrida has earned the trust and respect of Chelsea's sports community. His strong work ethic, professional integrity, and can-do attitude have been hallmarks of his service. Parents, volunteers, and league leaders consistently recognize his responsiveness, commitment to young people, and steady presence at games, practices, and community events. He has truly brought new energy and life back into athletics in Chelsea. Looking ahead, Mr. Giuffrida will play a central role in preparing Chelsea for the 2026 World Cup, an opportunity that holds tremendous potential for our city. His charge is to ensure Chelsea becomes a destination during next summer's festivities. We need to highlight our community's rich character, deep love for soccer, and vibrant cultural identity. The World Cup represents a unique opportunity to bring visitors to our downtown, support local businesses, activate public space, and create a celebratory environment for residents. Under Mr. Giuffrida's leadership, we are confident that Chelsea will rise to the occasion. Attached to this letter is Mr. Giuffrida's annual report detailing accomplishments and ongoing work to elevate athletics and sports tourism in our community. We are proud to celebrate his achievements, thankful for the council's vision in establishing this role, and excited for what is yet to come. Mr. Giuffrida is only getting started, and we look forward to celebrating even greater success as we approach 2026.
Thank you, clerk.
I'll move to accept and file a communication under suspension and just acknowledge that Mr. Giuffrida is here in the audience. And he's, he's done a remarkable job in connecting with all the sports here in Chelsea. And he's been at quite a number of football games and athletic events, um, more so than most other people in the past. I just wanna say, he's done an outstanding job and just continue what you're doing, you're doing a good job.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Veracopero.
Yes, when I started this program years ago, under Tom Ambrazino, I never envisioned that it would be this far, that it would help so many kids. It's a good thing. I know you say, why are you saying that now? Because I never envisioned that it would be this great, that it became what it is. It only started with $10,000 when it first, when we first did it, it was only for $10,000. Now I think there's much more money. But when we envisioned it, when I first proposed it to Tom, that's what he gave me. He gave me $10,000 for the, the youths, whatever it was for the city. And it grew, and I'm proud that it grew. And I'm happy with all my fellow councillors that we still give more to the benefits of the children, uh, the sports, it's a great thing, that's what it needed. So it was a good thing, but my honest opinion is that I never thought it would be that much money. And it was split up in two different sections. Because now it's broken into two sections, before it was only one section. And when I, when I, when I did that, it was, it was something called for, for mothers in needs, they couldn't send their kids to sports. That's what it was envisioned to be, was poor mothers that were just on the verge of being poor but not poor. So I gave this fund to help them. And, and I'm happy that it, it, I, it worked, and I'm happy that it grew this much. The intent was good and the progress that it achieved is much better. And I hope it continues and it becomes even much better than it is. And Mr. Giuffrida is the right man for the right job, and he does a great job. Thank you for doing the job.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Taylor, and then councillor Sanigay.
So I've risen many times to sing the praises of Charlie in this endeavor. So I'll, I'll refrain from, from going through what I've already said many times before and, and what a great job he's done. What I do wanna say is, I would ask the city to post this report on its city website so that the residents can see all the things that that man has done. All the programs, everything that, I mean, this is comprehensive. And so, um, you know, it's one thing for us to get up and, and, and say, we like this or we like that. But when parents can go on the city website and look and see all of these things and, and, and the opportunities that they have to give their children. I mean, this is such an important part of the city being proactive with its young people that this is, this is saving us tremendous amount of money and, and heartache and hardship down, down the road, so, i- in doing this. So, um, I say thank you again, but please, Mr. City Manager, make sure that that gets posted on the, uh, on the city website. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Sanigay.
Yeah, um, I agree with councillor Taylor. I was hoping that we could share all of the work that Charlie has spearheaded. Um, and I just wanted to say that I've worked with Charlie on a number of things and, um, have found him extremely approachable, very down-to-earth, full of ideas, and, um, just such a, a great person who works really hard. So it's been great to get to know him, and I look forward to working with him in the future.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Teshi.
Every time Mr. Giuffrida walks in the room, he gets well-deserved praises. And, um, you know, I just wanna say that one of the things I really appreciate about Mr. Giuffrida is that, um, he provides us with information. He tells us what he's working on, he tells us what's next, what's already been done. Um, and sitting, you know, in this position, it just makes me feel like I have the information. And whenever somebody asks, I can tell them, hey, you know what? This is actually something that's coming up. Or, you know, I know somebody you could talk to, and Mr. Giuffrida is definitely that person. So thank you and continue doing a great work.
Great work, Charlie. Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanna echo, um, obviously, he's done a great job. His resume speaks for itself. Um, for most of us, actually go out to the games and get to meet him and see him on the sideline. Not only is he a worker behind the desk, but he's also out there, you know, encouraging our youth and working and hugging them and, you know, high-fiving them, um, and pushing them. So really wanted to say we appreciate your work and look forward to continuing growth. Thank you.
Man, are we lucky that we took you from Revere. All right, moving on to the next item.
Next communication received regarding Chelsea Master Plan update. Dear councillors, I am writing to provide an update on our comprehensive master plan, Chelsea Palante, Chelsea Onward. The plan is progressing through its phases and is tremendous community support. Earlier this year, we commenced Phase One, learning and listening. We are now actively transitioning into Phase Two, visioning and testing. This summer and fall, we completed extensive community outreach and engagement activities as part of Phase One. This included a series of discussions and focus groups with stakeholders addressing critical areas. We held a meeting convened by the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce with local downtown business owners focused on economic development. We dove into community safety with the Downtown Task Force. We tested our value statement with community leaders in Chelsea. We hosted various conversations on housing and the environment with various community organizations. We also held a workshop with city employees who will be instrumental in executing the recommendations of the plan. These engagements have provided invaluable insight into our community's needs. These voices will be the foundation of the plan going forward. The plan has identified our values as a community. Community solidarity, which emphasizes fostering strong networks, collaboration, and mutual aid. Pride in our cultural diversity, celebrating Chelsea's rich historical heritage and multicultural character. Access to opportunities, valuing Chelsea's role as a gateway connecting residents to opportunities both within and beyond our city. Progress for everyone, which prioritizes development that benefits all residents, preserves Chelsea's working-class character, and ensures meaningful community input in future decisions. These values underpin our ambitious vision statement. By 2040, Chelsea is a vibrant city where families can stay, businesses prosper, and strong community networks help everyone thrive in safe and healthy neighborhoods. Our city continues to be a gateway for culture, diversity, and equity, drawing people from near and afar. The plan has identified that we need to address crisis response and stabilization while working on long-term prosperity for everyone. These include ensuring our families can stay by producing and preserving affordable housing, fostering conditions where our businesses prosper, supporting local enterprise and cultivating industry, strengthening community networks, cultivating safe neighborhoods, and many more. The plan is also working on a development framework that includes identifying areas for strategic investment categorized by their potential to transform, enhance, or maintain our community. We are now deeply engaged in the vision and testing phase. We will create drafts of the plan based on that feedback. This phase will develop conceptual ideas and scenarios for our city's future. The phase will also refine potential action and recommendation. The phase is critical for translating our shared vision and values into concrete strategies and actions. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, clerk. Councillor, uh-
Just wanna thank the city manager for, again, the work that he has had thus regarding all this information that's been spoken of. The city is bringing folks together, embracing, embracing folks, prioritizing the development benefits for the residents here. Uh, we're not there yet, but again, we are doing some great work in the city, uh, once more, really. Um, just wanna thank the city manager, uh, been on some of these tours, got on some of the speaking tours. But, um, you know, most of us as council members have joined in. Uh, just wanna say, we really appreciate your hard work, I know it's a lot, but, um, you know, that's why we make the big box.
Thank you, councillor. All right, we got about four more sections to go, we're gonna make it through the night, guys. Moving on to the next item.
Next communication received from the city manager regarding fiscal year 2026 tax rates, official rate approval. Dear councillors, fiscal year 2026 Chelsea tax rate has been certified by the Bureau of Accounts, Department of Revenue at the following. Residential rate at the amount of $11.48 per thousand and commercial industrial at the rate of $23.79 per thousand.
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file under communications. If there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, councillor.
I'd like to thank the Assessors Department. Each year it seems to be fair, they do a great job-
Councillor, turn on your mic.
I'd like to thank the Assessors Department for, each year they do a great job. And, um, it seems like we, instead of raising our taxes, they're going down a little. So there must be something good when our taxes, instead of increase and decrease. Even if it's just for a few pennies, it's better to decrease than increase. So I'm happy, like, last year, the single family were little. This year, the tree family got buried, last year they didn't. So they fear, each year they go according to what it is. They don't bury one particular one. One year they bury one, another year they bury another. But overall, it's a fear and it's a good one. So I'd like to thank them for it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor, moving on to the next item.
Next communication received, requesting council approval of donation from Good Sports Foundation. Dear councillors, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A 1-2, I am writing to request the city council formally approve a donation of athletic equipment to the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs from the Good Sports Foundation.
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communications. If there are no objections, it's coming up under new business. Thank you to the Good Sports Foundation.
Thank you, councillor, moving on to the next item.
Next communication received, requesting approval of donation from Good Sports Foundation for baseball. Dick?
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communication. If there are no objections, same as the last one.
Thank you, councillor, moving on.
Next communication received, requesting council vote to reaffirm October 18th, 2021 vote on proposed charter amendments. Dear councillors, I am writing to respectfully request that the city council vote to reaffirm its prior vote of October 18th, 2021 regarding proposed amendments to the Chelsea City Charter. As you will recall, from June 2020 through January 2021, the city council conducted a thorough review of the charter as required by the charter's mandate to undertake such a review every 10 years, and each year ending in zero. Throughout the process, the council held multiple meetings and public hearings to examine the charter's provisions, receive community input, and consider recommendations for improvement. Following the extensive public process, the council voted on October 18th, 2021 to approve a set of proposed charter amendments and submit them for consideration by the state legislature. Recently, we were notified that unfortunately, the proposed charter amendments were not adopted by both branches of the legislature and signed by the governor prior to the end of the legislative session.
Madam President, move to waive the rest of the reading and accept and file under communications. If there are no objections, it's coming up later.
I'd like to speak on it, please.
Seeing no objections. Councilor Taylor, you have the floor.
So, I think we ought to, the, the direction for this is not just to reaffirm what we did, but to reconvene the charter, uh, review. Um, I think that there are a lot of things that could really be, a lot of problems that could really be solved, and because of the people that were on the board, I was on the board, Councilor Robinson was on the board, Councilor, um, Brown was on the board. Uh, but I think that we could actually solve a lot of the, the, the problems that now exist and we keep on, you know. And I think just reaffirming this is, is, you know, we're just going through the motions when the legislature wouldn't even approve it. So, you know, I, I, I know it's a lot of work. I would happily volunteer to be on it again, uh, if, if, if some of the councilors don't have the time to do it. Um, I would, I would, I would happily do it, and, um, I think it's worth another go-around to try to tackle some of these problems that we have. And, um, that didn't, that couldn't get done last time because of the, the, uh, uh, really combative nature of the ci- where the City Council was, uh, four years ago. So, uh, that being said, I, I hope we can consider it in the new year.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Jimenez. Councilor Brown and then Councilor Teshi.
Um, yeah, I just want to say I, I, I agree with Councilor Taylor on this. Um, I, I think to me, it's more of a question of whether it's worth it to submit this and then submit another one. Like, is there any changes that were made that are worth just getting across, right? Or will they just ignore the second one if we submit one now? You know, I think I have many questions about how things move at the State House or don't move very often. So, I think it's worth the conversation of what would be best to make sure that we can get an updated charter review process sent and, and moved through as well. Um, because I think Councilor Taylor is not the only one who has expressed wanting to look at the charter again. I think many of us want, want that to happen. Um, so I, I, I agree. And I, and I think it's, it's worth the conversation on whether we just want to move it forward or, um, actually stop, just review the whole thing and, and, and do it again.
Councilor Brown?
Uh, I'm a little, um, lost here. I, I don't believe that we can because according to our charter now, it's every 10 years. So, we've already met that obligation. I, again, if we can get a, an amendment to it, I believe most towns and cities, they have, um, charter re, um, what is it?
Revision?
Re-revision, but they have to, you have to elect a board member. So, I'm not sure. If we can look into that and get a legal opinion, I'll be all for it.
Councilor Teshi.
Yeah, I'm also in favor of revisiting the charter. Uh, you know, um, reaffirming what a prior council did, I, I'd rather just do it over and see what the new council says.
All right. Thank you, Councilor Teshi. Moving on now to the next item.
Final communication received from the City Manager, requesting approval of appointments to boards and commissions. Dear Councilors, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. Planning Board, Ms. Genalys Herrera of Chelsea. Appointment to the Tree Board, Ms. Lauren Patterson of Chelsea. Appointment to the Cultural Council, Ms. Flor de Maria Guerrero Aldana of Chelsea. Appointment to the Cultural Council, Mr. Magna Garcia of Chelsea. And reappointment to the Board of Register as a Voters, Mr. Jacob Resnick of Chelsea. And reappointment to the Community Recreation Advisory Board, Ms. Hillary Paul Metcalf of Chelsea. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. I have attached a resume for new appointees.
Madam President, move to a second reading. There are no objections.
Seeing none. Thank you, Councilor. Moving on to communications and petitions to the council.
First communication received by the City Council comes from the Assistant Parking Clerk regarding the agenda items approved at the November 5th, 2025 meeting of the Traffic and Parking Commission.
Is there a motion?
Move to accept and file under communications if there are no objections.
No, 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 no. I know, uh, I, once you accept and file it, it means you accept it, and it goes into effect.
If you would like to object, you are more than happy to object. I am making a motion.
Yes, I'd like to send it to a subcommittee to be talked about.
Okay, uh, point of clarity from our clerk.
I'm right. I know some things.
So, if we do not act on this now, we do not have enough calendar days to book this meeting, it'll go into effect within 30 days either way.
It will go into effect within 30 days?
Either way.
Wow. So, we want to act on it now? Because, uh, I think on there, it has something that's affecting all of us, and it's between Essex Street where they want to extend it. That's, Mr. Tesh is important to him too, his constituents. We need to talk about that. We don't need it to be crammed down our throat, because this was brought in a late communication. Now, we got a little amount of time to act on it. So, if we adopt it, it goes into effect within 30. So, how can we fix it?
So, yes, with permission from the council, I'd like, um, uh, our clerk, if you could please give us the options at hand.
If you want to have it sent to a subcommittee, the problem being, it goes into effect if council does not vote to reject or affirm it 30 days after it was received. You'll note on the communication the timestamp, the date.
All right, so we vote to reject?
That would be 30 days. So, if your choice, if the desire is to reject a specific agenda item on this communication, council can vote to separate that one?
Yes.
And have that treated separately if you choose.
Madam President, point of order.
Councilor Jimenez.
I, I just, I, I want to make sure that I understand, and, and what is it that requires us to approve or reject this? Is that the charter?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Teshi.
Yeah, I would ask if we can single out item number 11, the bus network redesign.
Yeah.
You know, I think we need a little bit more information, especially, you know, what the impact, ultimate impact would be to the residents. I don't have a problem with any of the other items. Um, I would just ask again, you know, this doesn't mean it gets shut down completely. We can always revisit it next year. Um, so, I would just ask the council, since this is in between Cooper's district and my district, uh, to just be considerate of our work and responses to our constituents as we try to do, you know, the best we can, um, so that we can revisit this, uh, you know, the, the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Todd Taylor.
So, I would just, I would ask, uh, through the chair, um, the City Manager, whether there's anything, um, really on here that is, that is really, uh, pressing. Um, I suppose the person who wants the handicap, uh, sign, it thinks it's pretty pressing. Um, but, uh, other, other than that, um, and can we, can we, we cannot, we have to accept or reject the entire thing.
Otherwise, the time expires?
So, your options would be, if you, if council specifically wants to reject one particular agenda item, you're free to make a motion to separate that one and roll call voted separately. The other items, council can either vote to directly affirm them tonight or vote to accept and file, in which case they'll go into effect in 30 days anyway.
And Councilor Teshi has highlighted 11.
So, so, Madam President, um, I would, I would say, I would say this, that in, in deference to my, uh, fellow councilors here and their district, um, if, if they want to have a conversation about this and about what it means in their district, I would happily vote to reject that item so that it comes and we can re, the, the, uh, the, the Traffic Commission can re, uh, uh, assert it in the new year with the new council, and, uh, and then we can, uh, go ahead and, and, and yay or nay on it. I, I just, I just think that, you know, we, we've seen a lot of these things come up. When we don't talk about it, there's a lot of trouble. And so, I'm trying to be proactive and trying to get people to, you know, talk about things and invite the, invite the people to come to the subcommittee and voice their opinion. Thank you.
We have City Manager on deck. Would you like to share a few words? And then I know another counselor also has questions.
Yeah, my question was, Councilor Taylor's original question about if there's any urgency. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, the first item is, is, uh, Vision Zero, which, which the council already voted on, right? So, that's all, that's, it's, it's, it's the same. Um, and then the handicap sign, it, it's regular business. That, that, uh, we have a, a lot of requirements to apply for handicap sign, uh, and, and the, the commission reviews a whole, whole, whole lot of things. I, I don't think that is, is controversial. So, it does appear that, that what's controversial is, is item 11. Uh, I, I, I will say that this is not a request from the City of Chelsea. It's a request from the MBTA. Uh, and it relates in, in particular, uh, to, uh, the bus stop on the backside of Roca. Uh, so, so it's, it's, uh, it, it, and by the way, I, I, as, as the clerk ha- has shared, the City Council is the approving body. So, it, it is within your right to, to reject, uh, item 11. Um, but I, I just wanted to clarify that, that, uh, uh, what the MBTA is requesting is, uh, is, is for the sidewalk to be widened by one foot, so, uh, 12 inches. Uh, and, uh, the reason for it is, is that the, uh, when their buses pull up to the sidewalk and they lower the gate on, on the sidewalk, there's not enough width of, of the sidewalk in order to allow a wheelchair to leave properly in, into the, uh, into the site. Uh, um, what, what the Department of Public Works has, has done is, is they, they went out and it, and they, and they striped a, a one-foot line, basically. So, as you drive home, i- i- if you want to stop by that area, you'll notice that there's a, 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 a one-foot line, right? That, that is, it, it basically is demonstrating what, what, where the new sidewalk would be. Uh, again, this is not a request from the City of Chelsea. It's not something that, that was, was, uh, initiated by us. It, it, it was initiated, uh, by the MBTA in order to make that bus stop handicap accessible.
What can I, can I say?
Councilor Cooper, one second.
Okay, I just want to clarify one thing. Uh, the MBTA says, right, Mr. City Manager, that, uh, that's for the handicap ramp. How about the other bus stops with the handicap ramps still goes the same way? So, why do you choose that one particular one to say that? So, if you're gonna do that, do them all. Why just pick on that one? So, in other words, you're saying, we need it there for the handicap. But never mind the handicaps on the other side. They can go on and do it the way they are. So, it does not make sense that you're gonna do one and not the other. And then, I know my fellow councilors ready to say, well, I'm not against handicap people. I fight for handicap people. But I also, I'm not, I don't want to, that place is so congested. I asked them to have a study done. They said it costs too much money to do a study. So, I asked them, he said he was gonna put a stripe and put cones for a month to see how it works, right? So, they want to move everything over. He says to me, you could put three cars. This is what they told me. They said, you could put three cars in that lane. No, you can't, because one side is parking and the other side is only 30, what'd he say, 35 feet, they said, you can fit three cars. But now, if that's the case, why is that place so congested every day? Why is it that you can't move? Even if you shrink a one foot, it will make it worse and worse. If you want to do it, I'm not against what you want to do, but bring it to the resident, have a study done, and see what the impact will be on the people that use that and go there every day. So, what is wrong with wanting to do that, instead of saying, this is what we're gonna do? That's what's wrong. What too many, a lot of times is that, we have a study, and we say this is the best thing for you, but you don't live there. So, how do you know it is the best thing for me? Because you had a study, and you're saying, this is what it is? Don't go by all your studies all the time. Ask the actual people that live there, how it feels. Go around and ask them and say, what do you think of this? Go over there and try it for a month and see what it does. I live there.
Thank you.
And anybody that drives through Chelsea has a hard time going there. Try to go through there and see how long it takes you. Just to move. So, I'm not, and they always throw that, the stuff, try to make a pity. Oh, it's for handicap. Nobody's against handicap. If you're gonna do it for handicap, do it in every bus stop. Why you just pick that one?
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Jimenez.
I just have a question about the process. So, if we got this down, it then has to go back to parking and traffic. So, basically, we're seeing this in February? And, Mr. Clerk, like, essentially, like, just in, like, terms of me, order of meetings, right? It would go back to parking and traffic in January for their January meeting, or does it, we don't?
I, I think if anything, it would be a matter of what the MBTA does in response, because they were the ones who submitted the plan to the city in the first place. So, I think that MBTA would have to come back to the city with whatever updated plan, which might take longer than a month. Or they might not, right? They might say, okay, well, uh, we're gonna do another bus stop, right? They, this is, it absolutely can be what the MBTA, uh, uh, ends up doing.
All right. Are there any other questions?
So, I think just based on that, like, I, I just want to make sure that what we're communicating to the MBTA is not, we don't want this. It's, we want to have time to discuss this, right? So, I think if that is our goal, I would like for the city, I, I don't know if the city or, or one of us, I don't know, should reach out to the MBTA to just make sure that they understand that, um, we just want to talk about it, right? And, and that way, they can just resubmit it, and then we can move it forward if that is the will of the council. Um, yeah. And I'm, I'm happy to be the person to reach out to them if that's helpful.
Awesome. Thank you, Councilor Jimenez. Councilor Teshi.
I make a motion to separate, um, Agenda Item 11.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Councilor. Moving then to a roll call.
Roll call vote requested specifically on Agenda Item Number 11, to approve bus network redesign, curb extension at Pearl Street opposite Essex Street, lengthening bus stop zone for an additional berth at Broadway and Ford Street, based on communications submitted by Project Manager Thomas Quadromani of the MBTA.
Thank you, Clerk.
Roll call vote before you. A yes vote will be to accept the agenda item. A no vote will be to reject the agenda item. Counselor Tenary Garcia? Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
So, no.
No. Counselor Taylor?
No.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Tesh?
No.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
No.
Counselor Sanigate?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Vega?
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor Jesus?
No.
No. The vote is three in favor, six opposed, two absent. Agenda item rejected. Now, you're left with the other two agenda items, Agenda Item Three and Agenda Item Seven.
I move to accept and, and file the communications. There are no objections.
Seeing no objections. Let's proceed.
Remaining two agenda items accepted and filed under suspension. Our final communication received comes from the Planning Board regarding recommendation on proposed zoning amendment Section 34-262, Table of Dimensional Regulations, and Section 34-300, Table of Principal Use Regulations. Dear Counselor Jesus, at a duly posted regular meeting of the Planning Board held Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, the Board voted 7-0-0 to recommend that the council deny the Residential R1 Table of Dimensional Regulation and Table of Principal Use Regulation Amendment as proposed. Board members felt that the proposed amendment could spur unintended consequence if passed on its own, as it is not coordinated with other dimensional regulations such as open space, yard setbacks, parking, and other requirements. Members felt a more comprehensive proposal that factors in other dimensional regulations as required. In addition, the R1 District Regulations are meant to create and ensure low-density neighborhoods with large lot sizes and single-to-two-family homes on each lot. Changing these regulations would significantly change the purpose of this district, requiring a more community-engaged process, and could negatively impact the existing character of these neighborhoods.
Uh, accept and file the communication. Like to speak on it?
You have the floor, Councilor.
Uh, in regard to what this does, that we're always talking about affordable housing, affordable housing. There is no place in this city to build anymore. And this didn't really change anything. Some of these board members, I hate to say it, don't know what they're talking about. Like, one person says, oh, it will change. Chelsea records said it. It will change, uh, I, I, it will change from a one-family to a two-family to a three-family. The state already allows you to do that. The state allows you to do that. You, you can have a one to a two to a three. You can, even if the, the board says you can't do it, you appeal it. Well, it does. State does. They did it right in front of my house. That was a two-family. They made it a three. And they did that for a reason. The reason was to allow more affordable housing, more housing to be built. And the only thing this did, it didn't change anything. It just changed the dimension from 7,500 square feet to 5,000, which is the same all over the city. So, I don't get why... So I don't get why they are so afraid. It's going to come. Eventually, it's going to come, because this city's only 1.8 square miles. Regardless, you fight it, you're against it, it's going to come. You can't stop people from building little houses. You want to keep, preserve, this is the part that really upsets me. You want to preserve the integrity of your neighborhood, but you don't want to preserve the integrity of every other neighborhood. So how does it make sense to say, well, we don't want it here, but it's okay to bury everybody else? That's kind of unfair. I believe equality should be for all. If you're going to bury every other district, why not that one? Well, we can't, because it would change the integrity. I've been trying to make it fair for the last 10 years, and every time, I get an answer. And one of the answers is, we can't do it because it would destroy the neighborhood. But it's okay to go, like, in my neighborhood, they built a house on 3,000 square feet, which you're supposed to have 5,000. So the people on the planning board that approved it, oh, we made a mistake. You're allowed to build. You can go look at it, it's on Suffolk Street. It's a 3,000-square-foot lot, and it has a three-family home. So it's okay to have a home on a 3,000-square-foot, which now you're saying you're against it. But why did you approve that one? So how does it make sense that you say one thing and do another? This is not going to happen now anyways, because we can't do nothing about it. It's going to have to come back, because it got to go to public hearing. Then let the people decide. I think our city eventually has to grow. That's the number-one thing. If your city doesn't grow, you die. So how do you grow? You grow by development. Yes, you can't bury everybody, but you also can't stay stagnant. You have to move forward. You can't stay stagnant all the time. So this here doesn't really kill anything. What it does is it just lowers it from 7,500 to 5,000 to go the same as the rest. That ain't doing much. I didn't, and as far as building an additional unit, it's the same thing. Or the other places is 3,000, and over here is 3,500. So the units don't change, is the lot size. Around our city, there is no bigger lots anymore. All the big lots are located in R1. So eventually, they're going to develop. Yes, you can reject what I say now, but even when I'm gone, one day, you're going to see, they're going to build, and you can't stop it, because that's the way it has to be.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Taylor.
So I'll be brief, because this is going to come up under new business. But, look, the whole point of zoning is that you can stop things. And I'm sorry if the counselor's district is not an R1 district, but then, no city in the Commonwealth has the type of zoning that you're proposing. So that where every, every district is alike, I mean, this is just really not viable. And even the planning department said that this was not well thought out, and this is not the way that we need to conduct business. Changes to the zoning need to be carefully thought out and discussed. We've seen, then, what happens, you know, people get upset. So what I would, what I would suggest is, you know, if, if, if people want to have a discussion about zoning, that's fine. Let's have a discussion. But to just propose an amendment like, or a zoning amendment like this, out of the blue, with no consultation, no discussions among the counselors, just a perennial kind of attempt to have, quote, fairness, I think is really, it may be well-intentioned, and I'm sure that it is. I don't doubt that. But it's really misguided. And I got to say that I hope we reject this, because, but I'm open to having a discussion about these types of issues. So, you know, I think that is a better way to go. Thank you.
All right, moving on to committee reports.
Your sole committee report comes from Counselor Taylor, from the meeting of the Subcommittee on Ways and Means that was held November 17th.
Is there a motion?
Accept and file the committee report under suspension. If there's no objections, I'll speak on it briefly. We, we had several orders, and, you know, most of them, we've already read through in the communications. So I'm not sure that we really need to go through unless people want, want a detailed report. We did go through the communications, so we'll just accept and file. If anybody does have any questions about it, please feel free to give me a call, and I'll go through it with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to second readings.
Our first item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 64, budget management procedures whereby costs incurred in FY '25 were not paid and are owed to vendors, and to meet this obligation, funds are required from current year FY '26 budgets as noted. The Chelsea City Council authorizes the following expenditures to satisfy unpaid balances that total $37.95 from prior years as follows. Fire Department, $16.55; DPW, $21.40 for EZ Pass related to toll charges.
Is there a motion?
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objection.
Roll call vote requested. Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia? Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Is there a vote there?
Pay them all, pay them all.
Enthusiastic, yes. Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tesh?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted. Moving on, next item under new business. Our second reading is order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Section 3-5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea and Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, 1-2. The Chelsea City Council hereby accepts a gift of $10,000 from the Carnegie Corporation of New York to the Chelsea Public Library for a community event to further the mission of the library and benefit our community.
Is there a motion?
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objections, moving to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tesh?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted. Next item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the Chelsea City Council hereby authorizes the city manager to accept a $15,000 grant from Mystic Valley Elder Services for a health and wellness program at the Chelsea Senior Center.
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tesh?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted. Next item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Section 3-5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea and Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, 1-2. The Chelsea City Council hereby accepts a gift of $1,000 from the Ruby Bridges Foundation to the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs as part of the 2025 Safe Roots Partnership Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day Mini Grant.
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia? Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tesh?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Next item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Section 3-5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea and Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, 1-2. The Chelsea City Council hereby accepts a gift of $1,000 from the Ruby Bridges Foundation to the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs as part of the 2025 Safe Roots Partnership Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day Mini Grant.
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tesh?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Next item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Section 3-5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea and Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, 1-2. The Chelsea City Council hereby accepts a gift of $1,000 from the Ruby Bridges Foundation to the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs as part of the 2025 Safe Roots Partnership Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day Mini Grant.
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tesh?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Next item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Section 3-5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea and Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, 1-2. The Chelsea City Council hereby accepts a gift of $1,000 from the Ruby Bridges Foundation to the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs as part of the 2025 Safe Roots Partnership Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day Mini Grant.
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia? Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tesh?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted. Next item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Section 3-5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea and Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, 1-2. The Chelsea City Council hereby accepts a gift of $1,000 from the Ruby Bridges Foundation to the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs as part of the 2025 Safe Roots Partnership Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day Mini Grant.
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia? Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tesh?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Next item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Section 3-5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea and Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, 1-2. The Chelsea City Council hereby accepts a gift of $1,000 from the Ruby Bridges Foundation to the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs as part of the 2025 Safe Roots Partnership Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day Mini Grant.
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objections, moving on to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia? Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tesh?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandiget?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Next item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Section 3-5 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea and Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, 1-2. The Chelsea City Council hereby accepts a gift of $1,000 from the Ruby Bridges Foundation to the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs as part of the 2025 Safe Roots Partnership 45, Section 3. Authorizes city manager to utilize any surplus funds for current and future park funding improvements for open space within the City of Chelsea, and certifies the city manager's authority to enter into an agreement for the receipt of these funds and directs him to take any and all necessary action to accomplish the project.
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing objections, moving to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote requested. Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tej?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandigut?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine members in favor, zero opposed, and two absent. Resolution adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Next item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, the Chelsea City Council hereby accepts and approves a grant in the amount of $100,000 from the United Way of Massachusetts Bay and Merrimack Valley for the public purpose of funding the One Chelsea Fund.
Thank you, Clerk.
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Moving to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote requested. Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper? Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tej?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandigut?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Our final item under second readings, order introduced by Counselor Taylor, being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of $100,000 from General Stabilization Fund to City Manager's Department Account Series for emergency assistance efforts in the city's One Chelsea Fund account, and funding shall be available for the program until its completion.
Motion?
Move to a roll call vote on the adoption.
Seeing no objections, moving to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote requested. Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tenary Garcia is absent. Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Cooper? Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Counselor Tej?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Sandigut?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
And Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted. We are done with second readings. Moving on to new business.
Thank you, Clerk.
First item under new business, order introduced by Counselor Taylor. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, 3D, and Chapter 2 of Article 7, Division 3, Section 2-330 of the Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council acts on a report of the Community Preservation Committee on the awarding of grant funding to FY '26 Community Preservation Act projects in the amounts as followed. $50,000 for stitching against the heat.
Madam President, can we waive the rest of the reading, since we had the communication on this earlier?
Move to Ways and Means.
All right. Seeing no objections, moving on to the next item.
Next item, order introduced by Counselor Taylor. Order that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and Section 3-5 of the City of Chelsea Code of Ordinances, this Chelsea City Council hereby accepts the donation of athletic equipment to the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs from the Good Sports-
Has to waive the rest of the reading and move to Ways and Means under suspension.
Seeing no objections, moving on.
Order introduced by Counselor Taylor. Order that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and Section 3-5 of the City of Chelsea's Code of Ordinances, the Chelsea City Council hereby accepts the donation of athletic equipment to the Department of Recreation and Cultural Affairs from the Good Sports Foundation as detailed in the inventory below.
Move to Ways and Means.
No objections, moving on.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Sandigut. Order that the city manager create a working group to complete and submit an application to the National Civic League for the 2026 All-American City Award Competition.
Counselor Sandigut?
I would like to make a motion to adopt and file under suspension, seeing no objections, and I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor.
Great. Adopt. Adopt. I said adopt. Didn't I say adopt?
Yeah. You got this.
Accept and file, I think you said.
No, I heard adopt.
I said adopt and accept and file, but thank you.
It's okay. It's been a long night.
Anyway, I had the great fortune of being involved in the All-America City competition both in 2014 and in 2025. We had to come back again next year, and I thought, winning a fourth time, and this is just the excitement of it all, and I kind of in my mind thought, yeah, no, probably not. Until I had some conversations, and I looked at what the theme was for 2026, and then I rethought my reservation. So I just wanted to share that the theme for 2026 for the All-America City competition is America at 250, strengthening civic health and building trust. And I just want to read one part of this all. The 2026 award will honor communities that are reinventing how they come together to make decisions and solve problems. These communities engage residents, businesses, and public institutions in civic dialogue, collaboration, and community-building efforts that not only strengthen civic life and rebuild trust, but also address pressing challenges and lay the foundation for a better future. By advancing innovative, community-driven approaches to governance, they're helping shape a more responsive, resilient democracy for the next 250 years. And that portion of the description of the theme, for me, really highlighted some of the things that we are already doing here in Chelsea. We have some really innovative programs, and they are the envy of other communities. Not only did we see this when we were in Denver, but I hear from people all the time who say, "I want to come to Chelsea. Wow, the hub program, the children's cabinet, the youth hub program." So many innovative ways that we try to build community and build our civic network. And for that reason, I think we should really consider giving this a go, because I think we have a lot to offer. So, that is how I changed my mind.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jimenez?
I talked at length about the importance of trust earlier, so I, I will spare us all that. And just to say, back-to-back championship, baby. That's, I'm all for it.
All right, moving on to the next item.
Next, we have an order introduced by the council president. Whereas pursuant to Section 9-7 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, the Chelsea City Council established a charter review committee in 2020. And whereas the charter review committee and the Chelsea City Council held public meetings in 2020 and 2021. And whereas the charter review committee submitted its recommendation to the city council in October 18th, 2021, the city council voted to send to the Massachusetts General Court the attached petition for adoption as a home rule petition to amend the city charter. And whereas the Massachusetts General Court did not have the opportunity to vote upon the home rule petition by the end of its 2024 session, and the City of Chelsea wishes to pursue the charter changes. Now therefore be it ordered that the Chelsea City Council hereby affirms the vote of October 18th, 2021 as to attached home rule petition, and furthermore requests that the General Court adopt legislation revising the charter of the City of Chelsea precisely as attached, except for clerical or editorial changes of form only.
Madam President, a move that we refer this to a subcommittee on conference, so we may further talk about how the council wants to proceed, and, you know, we're not rushed by the end of the year as well.
Seeing no objections, Counselor. Moving on.
I just have a quick question, if I, if I may, to the clerk. What is, what was the process it went through, and what, did they just choose not to take it up at the State House, or what was the holdup?
So when it was in, my understanding was, when it was initially submitted, I figured that it was not passed in 2023 when I first got this position. I believe that amendments were required for the state senate to take it up. Those amendments were clerical and didn't require council approval. They were amended in December of 2024. Unfortunately, the amendments were not enacted in time for the senate to vote on it. And as of calendar year 2025, it had not been taken up as of yet.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the next item. Oh, yes, that will be referred to conference. Thank you, Counselor Tej.
Next item under new business, order introduced by Counselor Cooper. Whereas it is the expressed purpose of municipal zoning to promote health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the City of Chelsea. And whereas many parts of the City of Chelsea are congested, lacking requisite amount of open space necessary to continue developing additional housing opportunity. And whereas the Chelsea City Council believes changes to existing zoning regulations will allow for potential construction of additional housing opportunities in different neighborhoods throughout the city. And whereas pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, the petition was forwarded to the Chelsea Planning Board for public hearing, which was held Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. Now therefore be it ordered that the following petition for adoption of amendments to Chapter 34, Article 11, Section 34-262, Table of Dimensional Regulations, and Chapter 34, Article 13, Section 34-300, Table of Principal Use Regulations, of the zoning ordinance of the City of Chelsea be reviewed, and that a public hearing be scheduled to discuss the proposed amendments pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48.
I'd move to send this to subcommittee.
Seeing no objections.
It wouldn't make a difference if I object anyways. It's gonna go there, so if you send it to the subcommittee, the process starts all over again, right? It's okay. Start it again. It's the end of the year anyways.
Thank you, Counselor. Conference, yes. Counselor-
Motion referred to conference?
Motion referred to conference, yes.
Can I speak on it real quick?
Counselor Jimenez?
I would just like to second what was mentioned earlier by Counselor Taylor about the importance of revisiting this as a, you know, city-wide process. I, I, I hear what Counselor Cooper was saying, and in many ways, I, I share a lot of what, a lot of the values of what he's saying. And I think if we can take it up in a way that is kind of broader, I think it would be a way to make sure that we're not just, you know, targeting any one neighborhood in, in the city, but instead looking at a more holistic, bless you, Counselor, a more holistic approach to the zoning. But I just want to thank the Counselor for his initiative in introducing this as well.
Counselor Taylor?
So I, I just would have to say that this can actually be done in connection with the Pallante thing. So we can feed it into that, so we're not doing, you know, reinventing the wheel and doing double work. That's all. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
That concludes new business. Public announcements.
I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jimenez. Are there any moments of silence?
Moment of silence for Charlie Moore, who recently passed away, and Mrs. Galant, who was the wife of Richie Galant, that passed several years ago.
Thank you, Counselor.